I'd like to call into order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Wednesday, August 19th, 2020. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and Mr. Chairman, your quorum?
Good morning or good afternoon. Supervisors Frost.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Nativi.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Monday, August 24th at 7:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting is also broadcast live on KUBU Radio on 96.5 FM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch.
Thank you. Supervisor Nativi, will you do us the honor of leaving some pledge this afternoon?
Yes, I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to again welcome everyone that is watching on Metro Cable 14 this afternoon of this afternoon's proceedings of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. In compliance with directives of the County State Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC, this meeting is livestreamed and closed to the public. Temporary procedures are subject to change pursuant to guidelines related to social distancing and minimizing person-to-person contact. Of course, the public is welcome to provide verbal comments. We ask that you do so telephonically. You can dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda and/or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call, to be placed in queue, to make your public comment. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is greatly appreciated. When I open public comment for a specific agenda item or an off-agenda matter, the clerk staff will begin transferring you into the meeting. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. Thank you again for your patience. Of course, we also welcome written comments. Please send your email comment to boardclerk@saccounty.net. That's SAC County spelled S-A-C-C-O-U-N-T-Y. Your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record. With that, Madam Clerk, do we have any idea of how many folks are in the queue so far?
Currently, seven.
Seven, okay.
But that number could change.
And again, for those that may be watching, if you, when you do call in, if you plan to make a comment, if you could please turn down or off your devices if you're watching the meeting, that way we can avoid any feedback and interference. So with that, our one and only item today, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Item one is your allocating $45 million in federal CARES funding to address the COVID-19 health crisis in Sacramento County.
Okay, I see that our Health Services Director, Dr. Billenson, is already at the podium to provide a brief staff report, but before he does, I would like to offer some of my initial comments. I think everyone is well aware that last Tuesday, the 11th, this board heard, finally heard, from our executive staff about the allocation of CARES Act funding to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. In the course of questions and answers provided by staff, I will admit for myself, won't speak for my colleagues, but admit for myself, that there was still a substantial amount of confusion on behalf of hearing from both our Public Health Officer and our Health Services Director, as well as others, including our Executive Deputy in Charge of County White Services. Not saying this to pin blame on anyone necessarily, I just felt that as Chair of the Board, I at least should have some clear understanding of what the needs are. The ongoing needs are for public health as it relates to pandemic response. And so, subsequent to the meeting, I took it upon myself to have a direct, very direct conversation with our Public Health Officer, Dr. Olivia Casiri, who is also in chambers and prepared to address the board this afternoon, to ask her to put in writing in memo format, which is part of the public record for this item, a detailed account of what her needs are, and to give us at least some general line item detailed explanation about the breakdown of the estimated cost of what her needs are. She complied with that request. I want to thank her for doing so. That memo subsequently went to all board members, and again, as part of the record for today's proceedings. And that really is the subject of what we are considering today, is a request for a total of $45 million for her public health needs for the next six months. And I know she'll be available to answer questions, and I'm sure, I know we have seven members of the public so far sign up to speak and address the board by telephone on the matter, but that really is the narrow focus of today's hearing. So with that, I think it's now time for staff report.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm fine. Thank you very much for having me. Just wanted to, okay, thanks. Just wanted to start out by talking about how much work has been put in by the Public Health Division and our Department of Health Services, all the way back to January, and for the last six months, they've been working yeoman's efforts and yeowomen's efforts, and huge numbers of, huge amounts of overtime, and are running on, basically on fumes now. And so, one of the things that's going to be coming forward in the $45 million ask is staffing. But I wanted to make sure that we recognize the Public Health Division for the hard work that they've been doing over this last six months. And Olivia can join me at the table here. I'm just going to briefly go over the five categories of funding. Olivia? The five categories of funding that we're asking for in the $45 million. But first, I should mention that this is in addition to the $24.3 million that you all have given us to spend, appropriate to spend, on things like contact tracing, on navigators, on community health workers, on outreach, on testing. So there has been a significant amount, more than the $2 million that was stated prior to this, that's been on CARES funding. And so, that's $24.3 million. We have $45 million that we're asking for now. And let me give you the five categories they're in, and then I'll turn it over to Olivia to expound on that. Number one, $3.5 million for access to testing and timely availability of test results, including more lab reagents and things like that, which will allow us to go from 5,000 to 9,000 tests per month. The increase in expanding the search capacity of the workforce, as I was mentioning, we have a huge problem now with exhausted staff, and this is for staffing, both temporary staffing and other staffing, over the next several months. Third, is collaborating and partnering with community-based agencies, particularly LaFamilia, Latin Economic Council, the African-American and American Pacific, the Asian Pacific Islander communities, to get information out to them, specific to their ethnic entities that they're serving. And that's several million dollars for that. In addition, we're asking for several million dollars for assistance to individuals who need food and housing, for people that need to be in isolation or quarantine. As you know, we've been doing this for the motels in Operation Room Key, for the homeless folks. We have a similar issue with migrant workers and day workers and essential service workers who need places to stay if they're at risk or if they have COVID as well. So that's what that funding is for. Fourth is support in enforcing mitigation efforts of businesses, including review and updates of business guidance and protocols. This is actually through EMD, who does, who inspects the restaurants, and they have a lot of those issues in terms of mitigating and giving guidance, and also for our new reopening navigators, which you guys have also supported funding for. And fifth is actually potentially the most important of them all. It's only $4 million, and this is for vaccination materiel, both for flu vaccine, which we've talked about before, it's extremely important this year to get the flu vaccine, but even more important, this is to get for the county the syringes, the ampules, the refrigeration, et cetera, that will be necessary to give COVID vaccine. So it's one thing to get COVID vaccine that's approved for use in human beings, which will probably happen in January or February or March, but it's another thing to get it into 40 million Californians, 330 million Americans, and 7.5 billion people around the globe. And so, we're not waiting for the federal government to produce the syringes, just as we've learned our lesson in terms of the swabs that are missing because of a lack of preparedness. But we will have the materiel. Granted, inexpensive as it is, syringes are very, very inexpensive, but we're going to have that available to be able to serve the county residents and give them COVID immunizations when they are available. So those are the five basic categories that add up to $45 million. I've told Olivia that we'll be working, of course, we'll be working together, and we're going to be tracking the money being spent, both encumbered and spent, on a weekly basis that will be provided to Mr. Gill, and on a weekly basis. So that's where we are with the $45 million request. Those are the broad aspects of it, and that's how we're going to keep track of the funding. And now I'll turn over to Olivia.
Before you do so, thank you, Dr. Billenson, for that summary. We do have some members of the board that are in the queue, and I don't know if they want to ask you or Dr. Olivia questions, but we'll start with Supervisor Nativi.
Yeah, I don't want to interrupt the flow of the presentation. I do have questions. Certainly, Dr. Billenson, give a general overview. Maybe Dr. Casiri is going to fill in a few of the gaps, but I have a number of questions that go to some of the specifics here, to implementation, mobilization, but I can sort of wait, Mr. Chair, if Dr. Casiri wants to finish with the presentation and then ask my questions then.
Okay, I do also have a number of questions, but I think they're better posed for Dr. Casiri. Supervisor Kenny?
Same thing, I guess. You're probably going to go through a lot of the specifics, so I'll just hold on. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Casiri?
So, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, and members of the Board of Supervisors, and thank you again for this opportunity. I'm Dr. Olivia Casiri, and I'm the Public Health Officer for Sacramento County. Supervisor Serna stated he requested that I put our public health need in a memo in writing, and I presented that to you, and then presented it to you, and I appreciate the speed with which you have set up this hearing to discuss our need. So as Dr. Billenson has stated, those are the five main categories, and the reason that we are looking at that mainly is looking at where we're at in our response and seeing that with the number of daily cases, we seem to have plateaued at around 200 to 250 cases a day. Our hospitalizations also seem to have plateaued at around 250. Some of our major concerns with long-term care facilities, where once we had been able to control outbreaks, we are now seeing outbreaks in these long-term care facilities. And now, our death rate, which had remained low for quite a while, even during this spike, has started to go up again, and unfortunately, about 75% of our deaths are in the age group 65 and older. And with those that are hospitalized, a major part of that is with people with chronic diseases. And so, there's a need for us to be able to do more outreach. Initially, when the spike started, most of the cases were linked to gatherings in homes, but as the numbers started going up, we were seeing more cases appearing in different settings, such as workplaces. One area that we're really concerned about is with the agricultural workers, because oftentimes, they do not have the protection of being able to stay home. Oftentimes, it's just one person who's the wage earner in the home, and oftentimes, these are people who live in large households, and so very difficult for them to isolate. We also, of course, in some situations, have issues with cultural and language barriers. So, a great need for us to be able to partner more closely with the community-based agencies and identify these neighborhoods and communities where we need to do more targeted outreach. And in addition to the outreach, also be able to provide wraparound services, because we know that when a person has to remain isolated for 10 to 14 days, you have to think about things like food, and it makes it much easier for people to be compliant if they know that they have that support. So, I thank you again for considering this proposal, because it will help us in being able to work to bend the curve. As I mentioned, it looks like we are plateaued right now. We are still on the state monitoring list, which has stymied our ability to open our schools. We've had to deal with schools recently, with parents very anxious about being able to have their children return to school, and we want to be able to provide them that opportunity. So, we want to have a big push to be able to start moving the needle and getting these numbers down, so that we can get off the state monitoring list, reduce the number of deaths, and be able to open up more of our businesses and our schools.
Okay, thank you. One general question for you. You and I talked about it a little bit immediately following the distribution of the memorandum. Why six months?
So, when we started off, when Dr. Billenson first said, "Okay, tell me, you know, everything that you need," we had, we came up with a budget of 90 million, which was for a one-year period, because our anticipation is that this response is going to be going on for that long, at least. And of course, it will change. Our hope is that, at about six months, that we will have a, that brings us to the beginning of 2021, that we have every hope that there will be a vaccine that will be available, and that at that time, we'll change our response, and our needs will change at that time. So, it made sense to focus on the six months that we have right now, because that will take us, if we're starting today, that would take us to mid-February, which actually takes us through the worst of the flu season as well. Because as Dr. Billenson also pointed out, as we are moving towards this, as we are moving into fall and winter, another concern we have is the flu season. And so, we want to be able to have enough resources to make a big push to, for vaccination, so that we don't have that complicating the picture that we have right now with the COVID-19. So that's how the six months came up.
Okay, so that, I mean, we all have to look through a fairly opaque crystal ball at this point, in terms of what the future holds for the entire world when it comes to this pandemic. I mean, we have our hopes about when a vaccine might be available and all else, in terms of therapeutics and things to get us all to a healthy place, but we could very well, by mid-February, not have, not have a vaccine. We may be staring down the prospect of not being able to get a soon-to-be-completed vaccine at that point, distributed to all 7 billion people on the globe, including here in Sacramento County. I am going to expect, and please respond to this, that if, once we do have a better understanding as we draw closer to exhausting this request at that time, that the expectation on behalf of public health would be to come back before this board, and maybe even sooner than February, to explain that there are expected to be continuing public health needs well into the spring and perhaps even early summer of next year, and that we need to be made aware of that, so we can act to make sure that resources are deployed. Is that, is that your understanding as well?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And question, I guess, for both of you. Last Tuesday, we had a broad discussion about kind of the color of money, so to speak, in terms of the CARES Act funding, as was explained by our CEO, at his, you know, using his own best judgment, and you can debate, you know, the merits of that, but what happened was that the money was drawn, the CARES Act money was drawn down to preserve general fund, to preserve the general fund. So, I assume that when we're talking about standing, you're standing before us here today, talking about a $45 million request, and quite frankly, we don't get those types of requests very often, in terms of the order of magnitude, I assume the color of money doesn't matter. I know that the board letter suggests, in the financial analysis section, that perhaps the money would be a combination of CARES Act funding, or perhaps even future federal or state assistance, but my, I will tell you, my assumption, my impression, my expectation is that because of the way the CARES Act funding was managed, right or wrong, the money is not gone. The money is there. It isn't, it's in the form of the general fund. So, we have the money to respond affirmatively to your request, is my understanding. Is that your, your understanding as well?
So, there's a couple of issues that are mixed in here. One, it runs out December 30th, the CARES funding runs out December 30th. We will be retrospending money that we, so the last six months are really going to be more June or July till December 30th. So if we were using the CARES money, that's got to be spent by that period of time.
Understood.
The thought is that if we need more money, we'd come back after that.
Okay, all right. Okay. Yes, Supervisor Kenny?
Yeah, I was going to wait, but I want to follow up on that specific question.
Go for it.
So, with the retroactive money, and this is to Nav or Bruce or either of you, it doesn't matter.
Can you move your microphone a little closer to you? Thanks.
So, the retroactive money that we spend, and I know that it's because we authorize the staff to make decisions, and because we can't afford to come back for meetings and make those decisions. So, then you come back to us for retroactive permission to allocate that money. Does it hit the balance sheets when you make the decision, or does it hit the balance sheets when we retroactively approve it?
When we spend the money, yeah. But when we spend the money is when it hits the balance sheet.
So, I'm sorry, what?
When we spend the money is when we'll recognize that we spent the money.
Okay, so, I mean, if I was to get a report right now, and hopefully I'll get one soon, that shows the money that we spend on CARES Act money, if that report would show everything, including the money that has yet to be retroactively approved?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Supervisor Nativi, same line of questioning?
Well, I will ask more questions. I'll let you finish your line of questioning.
Okay.
I will piggyback on, I have a question that's come up in your question.
Okay, thank you. I had a specific question for Dr. Casiri, and it's relative to a conversation she and I shared, I think it was yesterday or the day prior. Under, under item three of your memo, and to which Dr. Billenson made some mention, it's a $15.3 million component, part of the $45 million, and part, it says, "This will also include assistance to individuals such as food and housing for people that need to be in isolation or quarantine." The board's in receipt of an August 12th letter from Blake Young, who's the, serves as the executive, I'm sorry, the President/CEO of the Sacramento Food Bank and Family Services, and he, it's a pretty detailed letter that outlines what the activities have been of the food bank in recent months, and I can tell you, as someone who's spent 10 Fridays, almost in a row, nine Fridays in a row, assisting with their food distribution efforts at Christian Brothers High School, I can tell you that the need is not only massive, but it's been growing. In that letter, Mr. Young outlines a need from Sacramento County to the tune of 1.5 million in unmet need. And based on our conversation, Dr. Casiri, you had mentioned that that was kind of your thinking in terms of explaining the 15.3 million that would in part be used for food security for our community in response to the pandemic, is it not?
Yes, absolutely. And actually, we do have a draft budget that we've put together with some of our partners, and what, once we, after today, once we know how much money we'll be able to use, then we'd be able to firm that up. And the plan is actually to, the food bank is one of our partners, works very closely with public health, so that would be one of the considerations as part of that budget.
But also, we are intending to use it for the migrant workers.
Can't hear you.
We're also, we're also using it for the migrant workers, so the housing is paid for by the state government through FEMA, which as you know, is three-quarters of the funding, but they also need funding for services like food and other types of things which this can pay for.
Okay. Thank you. And then, in terms of some of the verbal testimony, Dr. Casiri, that you just offered earlier, under, or relative to item four, and in reference to the action that the board just took yesterday with the passage of the Worker Protection Health and Safety Act, there was some discussion about the resource base from which we would draw to implement that act, in terms of things like code enforcement and having code enforcement work with your staff, Dr. Billenson, to ensure that employers in the unincorporated county were making sure that their employees are being protected in terms of adequate PPE and whatnot. I assume that that $3 million allocation under item four could be or would be used in part, were in whole, to augment that, that new intent.
Yes, so, public health has been working with environmental management and code enforcement whenever there are complaints that come about businesses and them not following the mitigation guidances. Environmental management has also reviewed a lot of guidances and put out protocols that businesses can use. They've also been providing education, and we know that they have a need of about $3 million to be able to continue doing that. And our hope is that we can also go further than that, because so far, we've been doing more of education, but we need to discuss the enforcement part. Code enforcement has been doing some enforcement, but we definitely need to have a plan for if we need to move further beyond the education.
Supervisor Serna, we are aware of the needs that both EMD and code have. I alluded last Tuesday that we've identified needs up to in excess of 180 million, and we know that number is in there.
Okay, thank you. All right, those are my questions for now. Supervisor Nativi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Billenson and Dr. Casiri. First, I want to just kind of preface my questions with just a commentary to kind of echo what both Dr. Casiri and Dr. Billenson have said here today and in previous appearances for this board, and that's the awesome efforts of folks in the public health realm, certainly our public health employees in Sacramento County, but all the partners that have worked, you know, long, long hours, you know, successive days, with, you know, little break of any in between. And I've had a chance since our hearing last Tuesday to talk with a couple of folks who, again, were not at all complaining, but describing what they have very, you know, I guess graciously, but certainly as a part of their professional commitment to this community, its safety, whether it's been at testing sites or in other aspects of tracing and so forth. And, you know, the numbers that we see, as Dr. Casiri points out, you know, certainly concerning, and we're on the watch list and so forth, but had it not been, and continue to be with the work that's been going on in the trenches, so to speak, I think that, you know, certainly things could be far, far worse, and we're better, I think, and best served by the dedication and commitment of all those folks, but certainly our frontline public health folks, and I want to extend certainly gratitude and appreciation on behalf of the folks that we all represent up here, but certainly folks that I know have been kept safe, and certainly have been able to, I think, realize, you know, their daily life in a way that hopefully has protected them and their families and their fellow neighbors. has protected them and their families and their, and their fellow neighbors. I would just note too, though, as a part of this, you know, in the discussion a moment ago about retroactive, and again, it may be tied to our labor agreements or not, but I think it's imperative that in a time of emergency, of a national emergency, of a state emergency, of local public health orders of emergency, that we figure out a way to make sure that folks who, again, who have given and continue to give at this very moment, I'm sure are working the front lines have, and is embedded in this, as I recognize, some of the communications that we've received, what we've asked folks who are in the public health realm by virtue of what their other assignments are, whether it's been with child protective services, or with tuberculosis testing and tracing, and all the other things that public health's responsible for, these have been added duties. And, and whether they're in management, or on the frontline nurses, or certainly Dr. Bealson, Dr. Cassiri, who I know are putting in those very long hours on weekends and such, I just think we need to be able to recognize that in a way that, you know, fairly compensates people, but also recognizes, you said, Dr. B., you know, the burnout. That's, you know, you know, if nothing else, just because the, you know, the, you know, the human spirit can carry folks a long ways in a, you know, in a fight like this against a disease, but that can only go so far with your physical and mental, you know, awareness and so forth. And so, again, that's not going to be solved here today, but I do think that recognizing, and I've talked to folks, I know that certainly Mr. Gill and Mr. Devine have been looking at a couple, you know, situations where folks put the time in, and then there, you know, there's some obstacles there, and I think it's important, without doing that from the dais, to make sure we look at that. But going forward, to get the help, and that's where I wanted to take this as well, is that to get the help that's needed today, needed tomorrow, probably well into the winter and the spring, you know, with or without a vaccine, just because of the, of the, of the nature of this disease and, you know, what it presents to the health and welfare of folks in our community, regardless of their age or where they live. And so, I guess my first question is, with what's being presented today, it's one thing for us to take an action to allocate $45 million. I guess I'm really interested, beyond the broad categories, of how soon we can put that money to work. And I say how soon, you know, whether it's hiring internally, contracting for, you know, seeking out and procuring, you know, other material, as pointed out here, community partners, and we've done, as recently as yesterday, took some actions that were both retroactive, but also prospectively. And so I guess what I need to understand is that this $45 million has to be spent, at least in its formatted form of the COVID CARES money, by December 30th. That's a four and a half month period versus six months that we're talking about, and then, you know, color of money or not, you know, it sounds like we're gonna have to carry this through, and, you know, in my conversation with Mr. Gill, obviously, we're gonna, you know, if we allocate the money, we're gonna, we're gonna make sure it's there. But I guess I'm curious as to, so how, how fast are you gonna implement? I mean, I would presume that when we left this chamber last Tuesday, that you were already working on contracts, that you already got, you know, department personnel engaged to put out the notice for more call for public health nurses, for personnel to do whatever it is, contact tracers, and yet, you know, it all takes time. In the meantime, obviously, the safety aspect, the burnout, but also then, you know, the clock is ticking for us to put these resources to good use. And so I guess Dr. G, I'd like to know a little more about implementation.
Thank you. So yes, we have been working on a plan, and we are going to utilize every tool that's available to us to get more, more people hired. So some of the tools where, or what's available to us is the contracts we have, that the department has for skilled, for nurses and for microbiologists and skilled staff. So we have already contacted them to ask how many they have available. We are also scheduled to meet with our internal HR, and they're going to help us with figuring out a way of making sure that we fast-track any on-call positions that we need. And so those are two ways we're doing it. The other is being able to use contracts. For example, in our plan, we talk about a strike, a strike team that would be able to go to the nursing homes. As I've mentioned, that's an area of great concern to us because of the outbreaks, and we know that they're struggling with being able to get tests done on time. They told us about a lot of the hurdles that they have to go through, having to contract with an outside, a lab outside of the state of California, and having to ship specimens back and forth. So our plan is that, one, with the expanded testing capability, some of which you heard about last week with a new lab that we are planning to contract with, that will be able to do more of the testing, as well as expanded testing in our public health lab, and then also contracting with the fire chiefs that helped us before with mobile integrated health teams that were actually able to go to these long-term care facilities. So one of our requests, and I think that HR is going to help us with that, is making sure that we are able to fast-track, expedite any contracts that we need. For example, I've mentioned the one with the hospital council and the fire chiefs will, will need contracts with the community-based agencies, the 15.3 million. I think actually all of that is actually going to go out into the community. And as I said, we already have a draft plan as to how that's going to be distributed, but the execution will require us being able to get that out as quickly as possible. We know that the need is there. We've heard from community members, and we know that there are many community-based agencies, Dr. Bealson mentioned one of them, that is already working on being able to assist migrant workers, but what they needed was the resources. So I believe that we can get this moving up very quickly.
Well, and I guess from, from my perspective, again, and certainly not to put any unreasonable expectations, but that, again, to, to go forth, and if it means, you know, folks beyond public health that have to work weekends or after hours to accomplish this, again, you know, that your partner departments, and whether it's general services, or, or, you know, personnel and human resources, that to me, and again, those costs I assume are, you know, can be, you know, covered because they're related to the COVID response, but I think certainly the urgency, and I think, you know, when we talk about, you know, convalescent and, and care homes, skilled nursing facilities, that if they're having to send tests out for employees and residents out of state and wait multiple days, I've heard both of you talk about the frustrations, and, you know, I understand that of, you know, eight, 10, 14-day turnarounds, which is, you know, you might as well not do the tests almost because it, you know, it becomes almost irrelevant, because the disease can spread if you haven't got those test results back. So it would seem to me that, that, you know, on the front line, if that's where we're seeing the numbers right now, that, you know, starting this afternoon, when we get done here, do it. I mean, that's, that's my view, is that, you know, if we're in an emergency, then we need to respond like we're in an emergency, and part of that is obviously the obligation we have is to make sure the money is allocated. But beyond that, then, you know, to help all of you in this community be successful in our combating this disease. So, Dr. Bealson, you even respond?
So we've had experience on all these issues recently. In terms of the STEM Express contract, that took about two or three weeks, which was incredibly fast. It may not sound fast, but it's incredibly fast. They are now doing two-day turnaround. So it's, and they're located in Folsom, but they're, they're two to three weeks. They're getting contracts going with the community-based organizations, probably take about a month, but they would start their work in knowing that they had the money coming in now. And then staffing is also an issue. I think, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure, but the microbiologists, they're not terribly many of them, right?
We're working on that. We have leads on several.
So what, as an issue, just as a potential issue, that some of the staff issues, some of the people, some of the staff types may not be available. So that's, that's an important point to make. That being said, I would, I would say we will get everything going. By a month from now, you will see a lot of the money expended. We will actually have encumbered more than that before that, but in terms of expended, I'd say probably a month before a lot of it gets expended.
Yeah, and, and again, money expended is certainly translated to work being done, but I guess where, you know, where our folks in my comments is that, you know, hit, hit the ground running, you're already running, you're running as fast as you can, and, you know, and, 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 you know, it's hard to catch a breath, but I just, you know, I want to be sure that beyond an action we take today, that, you know, one, you have everything you need to do to allow this community to be successful and to, you know, and I don't know if it's allowable, but under contracts, can you offer a premium? You know, you know, I'm concerned about folks in neighboring counties, but I'm concerned about Sacramento County residents and doing what we can here, and if we've got to do something to make sure we can get the hires and the contracts we need, then we ought to look at that.
Let me make a quick point before you go back. And there's a $24.3 million, which we've already been appropriated by you guys, the last of which was on this, was yesterday?
Yesterday, yes, it was.
Again, 16 million of that is, I mean, is, is testing, that has all been contracted for and paid for, actually paid for upfront. We did get a little bit of a premium, but actually, they were charging us less than they do through the normal sources. In terms of our community-based navigators, our community tracers, and our community health workers, that, that work had already been started by Sierra Health Foundation, so now the money is available to pay. So most of the $24.3 million has either gone out the door, or has been encumbered and started funding, started action.
And, and I know we had a volunteer corps, this was referenced last week, but, you know, volunteers do it because they want to do, to help, but that only goes so far. So I don't know if some of the volunteers could be employed, to at least have some stipend to help them do, because if you're already trained, they know what they're doing, why would we want, you know, lose time in trying to replicate that?
Right.
Just because we want somebody to volunteer versus providing some sort of stipend, so.
Yes.
I wanted to note to you, you mentioned about, you know, some of the harder-to-reach portion of population, and there was a specific reference to the rural areas. We're coming into harvest season, you know, we've already started certainly with some of the crops, but obviously with preponderance of grapes and the wine industry, certainly in southern parts of the county, but a number of other fruit and vegetable crops, that we've got some natural partners out there, certainly La Familia is very capable and competent. I think about South County Services, I think about our school districts, I think about our Head Start program with SETA, that have Head Start centers in some of those areas. Natural partners, and they're struggling with their own, you know, issues of trying to, you know, distance learning, and there's, some of those are smaller districts, but I would encourage us, if we haven't already, to make those contacts immediately, and they've got, you know, some threads down into the community, certainly have competent and capable cultural and language skill, you know, employees, and I think, you know, again, we, you know, we don't have to lose time, you know, and if we can employ, employ them as a partner, then I think we need to take a look at that. If, you know, if we're gonna make this work, I, you know, what I, what I see is, you know, certainly mobilization and implementation, and again, that's gonna take, you know, just as much effort, I'm sure, as it is just doing the frontline work here over the next few weeks to accomplish.
With our work with CalAg, they've already put together a group between San Joaquin, our county, and Yolo County, and they'll be working in Galton, Nilton particularly, and they have, they have this, these natural partners as well.
Okay, but I mean, I gave you a list of some too, that I know that are local.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Thank you.
I want to ask about the, kind of piggyback on what Supervisor Serna was talking about, in that $15 million category, and you have housing and, and food for those that are quarantined, but it would seem to me that, and yes, we have, you know, Sacramento Food Bank and Family Services has made a request, and even in the letter that Mr. Young sent, he notes there are other food banks that may have a more local focus, and so I want to be sure that as we're looking at this, and particularly for foods, you know, stocking shelves, if we're gonna have a long winter, and, you know, people are becoming more housing insecure, who knows what's gonna happen in Washington, I just think it's important for our food banks, who again, for folks, you know, on a regular basis anyway, but for, for those that are providing, and there are some smaller food closets that are located with some of the churches, and there are partners that obviously Mr. Young listed, but there are others out there too, that we, that translates into going out and, you know, making food purchases, making arrangements, you may have to warehouse some of that, they may have warehousing facilities available. It just seems to me, though, that, that we're gonna be in a much more critical situation as the, you know, as the weeks go by here, particularly with folks who are housing and food insecure. We still have a lot, we still have a state home order, businesses are not open, folks' unemployment is reduced or running out. I, you know, to me, it's critical. And again, I don't see that all being public health, you know.
On that point, Supervisor Tully, if I could just jump in?
Yeah.
I've talked to Steve Cantelli, we have the letter, we're looking at what the needs are. Steve is gonna be working with state OES with all the food issues, and given that this is continuing for the period it is, we do not want to be in a spot that there's a run of food and we can't get food.
Right.
So he is working with the state, what kind of funding they have, what else can we do, National Guard, so it's not solely on public health. We will work with Dr. Bealson, but he is integrated in with, Steve Cantelli on that conversation as we go through.
Okay, and I know you've been working on the FEMA monies too, I mean, you know, but that'd be a long time, we may have to front that money in order to, you know, to ultimately get return on that, but, you know, if we're in the middle, again, of a pandemic, it seems to me that, you know, let's, let's call upon that resource.
Would you mind if I chimed in?
Oh, sure.
On this particular subject, since I brought it up earlier. While I appreciate our CEO's comment that he just made about the, working with OES and ensuring that people are food secure through the activities of OES, I'm of the opinion, and perhaps others share it, that Sacramento Food Bank and Family Services in particular knows best how to make those purchases, knows best how to deploy and get the food to the people that need it. It's what they do for a living. It's what they do day in and day out. Having seen it, as I mentioned before, in action during the pandemic, I certainly, when we get to the place of emotion, entertaining emotion later today, I'm gonna be very interested in making darn sure that what we heard from Dr. Cassiri in terms of the intent of that 15.3 million dollar line item allocation, that a million and a half of it's going to the food bank, so.
I think Supervisor Serna, if I could just on that, my comment wasn't aimed to, that we're not gonna work with them, it's above and beyond everything we're doing. This issue has come up, Supervisor Tully spotlighted this last week, so we are gonna, beyond whatever we do, we do need to continue to work with the state on the food issue.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, just a little bit more here. So, really, in that same category of food, in the housing, I think that's the other thing we're seeing, and, you know, I don't know what level of relief is gonna come from the state, or obviously some legislation is still pending that might provide some eviction protections and so forth, but if I've heard one thing in over the last week and a half, you know, and some of them are tailored after, you know, after another letter that was provided, but individual comments as well about, you know, the, the real insecurity in, in the housing market that may have existed even pre-pandemic, but now is certainly, you know, you know, hyper-impacted by the, by the pandemic and loss of employment and so forth. So do we intend, and my question is, do we intend to work like with, with the Housing Redevelopment Agency, for example, with the emergency shelter grants that are being received, to partner with some monies there so that, again, think about what we did yesterday, there were ties to if you had a family member who was sick, you could get, you know, paid sick leave. I'm assuming the connections may not have to be the, you know, that the person is solely affected by COVID in the sense that they were sick, but, you know, they've lost their job, they may have lost other sources of support, and I don't know. I mean, I don't know, again, what the regs are, but I, but I guess my question is, is that thus far, we haven't, you know, from the county's perspective, haven't really offered any rental relief or housing relief in that sense, and we, you know, we have other, you know, streams of, of dollars which are, you know, certainly in, in great demand. So I guess my question is, maybe Dr. K or Dr. B, or Nav, how do we intend to see to it that those dollars, again, don't, you know, go away because we haven't found folks to partner with, and/or, I, I assume the needs out there, you could spend the $15 million in a week, I would imagine, so.
I think that's a conversation with SHRA, with the money that's there, how the allocation's gonna go. So we are gonna have that conversation.
Because they got some CARES money as well, and maybe there's some ability with this money to, you know, to partner up.
Yeah.
If I may, Nav?
Yeah.
Supervisor, there's not only the CARES money, but there's also new ESG money, there's home funding and things like that, that we have folks working with SHRA, and certainly tag into what's being discussed here, to make sure we make use of that money that's available, that's been allocated.
And I guess, if I could just be, put a real finer point on, on the question is, is that it's one thing if somebody is, you know, homeless or literally homeless, but if they're on the verge of being homeless, to help with, you know, rent or some, you know, other consideration that certainly fits within the, you know, framework of the CARES bill. CARES bill, and again, certainly related to the pandemic. That to me is very important. It's one thing, you know, once you're on the streets or you've been homeless for, you know, a period of time and you're at much greater risk, but when I think about families, you know, single parents, or, you know, even two-parent families that are coping with, you know, kids at home, about the school, I mean, and trying to do schooling, trying to maintain their work, assuming they have a job to go to, and then cover the rent. And so, again, we're not going to solve it all for everybody, but I think as a part of keeping our community healthy and certainly safe, part of that is, is that as we go into the winter months, with the exposure to the, you know, COVID-19, flu season anyway, colder weather, and then folks who are on the verge of, you know, losing their housing. And I think it's key, at least with some of these dollars, that we look at that aspect. And we really haven't thus far. And again, I'm not expecting public health to do all of this, so I guess maybe the question, you know, to what you said, Bruce, is that part of the charge today should be that, you know, let's prepare to use these funds. And again, we're not solely limited to COVID because, again, we have, you know, you know, made some availability of funds here in a state of emergency, whether it's FEMA or any other source that we, you know, we have available to us, including the general fund, I'll say as Mr. Serna said, then we need to be prepared to do that in the event that this crisis continues, so.
If I may.
Yes.
Address some of the things you brought up. So one of the things that we want to do is actually use a model that has been successful already with the Black Child Legacy, having an agency that will be responsible, one, to identify those community-based agencies that we'd be able to work with. And right now, we've been told that there are at least 15 already lined up. And these are agencies that have, in one way or another, already worked with public health. And they already have identified needs. I think what we need to do, once we know for sure how much money we'll be getting, is to be able to sit with them and actually work out the details, because they already know what the needs are. This is work that they do on a daily basis in their own communities. So all they needed were the resources, and this will allow them to actually make that second, go to that second step of actually working with people, because they are, it's easier for them to identify the people that are in need. We also have our contact tracers. As we mentioned, we have the new project that we have with contact tracers that are out in the community, and this will be an addition to their work, because oftentimes, when the contact tracers are doing their interviews, that's how some of these needs are identified. So this will be an additional resource that they can use, that will be readily available to assist people.
Thank you for that. So finally, the, as it relates to mental health, again, we've, you know, we've had funding come down for some of our populations irrespective of a pandemic, but I think as this continues to go on and on, the months, you know, and people become more insecure in their housing, maybe their job that they thought they were going to get back to goes away altogether. We see, you know, daily recounting of businesses being closed permanently. So with regards to the mental health piece, do we have a companion piece that will help us to the point of being, you know, out there in the community, deeply rooted in the community, working with partners? Do we have the mental health capacity then? Because I think that's going to be important too. It's one thing to stabilize my situation, but I just think the effects of this, as this goes on month after month, let alone the economic impact and maybe, you know, the physical impact of, you know, potential exposure or being exposed and getting into disease, also mental health. So I guess I would ask.
Right. The mental health is included in the wraparound services and the community-based agencies that we're looking for, are agencies that can address that as well. And as we identify additional needs, as we go into this, then if there is something that we're not able to provide, then definitely we can look at some of the resources that behavioral health has available. But definitely that is a very important factor, because we know a lot of people are impacted by this, with the loneliness, with the loss of jobs, with the job insecurity and the food insecurity. So definitely, that's very important.
And if the $45 million is not enough, or this four and a half months in which it is being expended, although we're talking about some things that will carry us, I guess, beyond that, then to the question the chair asked earlier, you would be back to us? There's, you know, that process is in place so that, you know, we find out that in this category with the collaboration and partnering, that the need is far greater than we understood. And we're, you know, trying to help people, we are, then you would be back to us sooner?
We'll definitely be tracking this and actually provide you with very regular updates, at least on a monthly basis, as to what the needs are and what we're seeing. And Dr. Billenson mentioned that he would like to be able to provide weekly updates on how we're spending the money. But in terms of the progress we're making, and my hope is that as we go into this, that we will see that our numbers will start to drop off. So that will be a good indication that what the interventions that we are implementing are actually working.
And maybe be able to open up?
Absolutely. I know that the schools, they're calling us every single day, so I would love to be able to get to that point.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. We're learning from our experience.
If I could also dovetail off of what, before we go to Supervisor Kennedy, who's been waiting patiently. But on the subject of mental health, I think we're all aware that the final budget discussion is fast approaching before this board in September. There's no reason why we couldn't have an open discussion as part of those deliberations about some type of 2020 calendar year rope off of some public health reserve that is associated with general fund to be available, just in the instance that, you know, we find, for whatever reason, our predicted mark of mental health needs was way off, and we actually need more, more resources than we thought on August 19th of this year. So I just encourage all five of us to think about that. Of course, it takes three of us to do much of anything, but I think that is something to consider because of the uncertainties. I think the mental health consequences of the pandemic are probably some of the most uncertain there are. I mean, you can kind of understand the biology and trends in terms of infection rates and ICU admittance and hospital admittance and that kind of thing a little bit better than how people are going to react to being isolated and staying at home. And so it'd be something I think would be good and appropriate for this board to consider in the course of our budget deliberations. And by the way, I should have said this at the outset of the meeting, the reason I also, and Dr. Casiri mentioned it for bringing this back so swiftly, the reason we're having this discussion today is because at least I wanted to have a very purposeful discussion before we had the discussion of the final budget in the beginning of September, so that we didn't have to wait to intermingle the requests of the 45 million together with consideration of the final budget. All right. Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you, Chair. So I guess my, as much a comment as I do a question at this point, because a lot of them have been answered. And that's the, and this isn't criticism toward the two of you, this is countywide. I understand, and I'm completely sympathetic to the fact that we, for lack of a better phrase, have been flying, or building the plane as we're flying. You know, this caught everybody by surprise. And it, as Supervisor Natale has said, it's, it is something of the utmost urgency, so we don't have time to necessarily slow down. But at some point, we're in this for the long haul, as Dr. Billenson alluded the other day. And I think that there is a certain amount of lack of planning just across the board. And we're reacting. You know, our planning seems to be board letter to board letter. And it's very difficult for the public to understand what we're spending money on, and the public to have an opportunity to have input in, if there's no real plan. It's very difficult for us as a board to look at expenditures line by line without looking at a big picture. Supervisor Serna has made the comment about his upcoming recommendation for the food bank, which I completely support. But, you know, that's probably not the best way to be planning expenditures on a case-by-case basis and whatever letter came in today. Sorry, I'm a big, I mean, I still believe in Gantt charts. And I, I just think that we need a plan in place so we can see, here we are now, here's where we want to get, here's the amount of resources we have, here's where we get there. And it just, it just seems real piecemeal. And again, this is not directed just to you.
No, I understand. So a couple of things. First of all, that's what the 45 million will do. We can actually have it as a plan.
I know, but I'm sorry to interrupt you, but my point is, is that here we are, we're spending money and then building a plan. We're backfilling after we expend the money, it feels like.
Well, the 45 million we have not spent yet.
Well, technically, though, that's what we're here today to do.
Right. Well, that's just to appropriate it and give us the, allow us to be able to use it. But it's, it is basically a plan for, of action. The $24.3 million, that was, at least in the terms of public health funding that we've done, we're, I'm putting together a piece to explain each of the different components and how they work together. So we will, we will do that. The other thing to mention is, well, a couple of things. Number one, I think we do have to get the information out better to the public. We've been, there's all sorts of reasons we haven't, you know, one thing, we've been deluged, like literally deluged.
I get that, and I'm sympathetic.
But like for the schools, as an example, there are three buckets. We need to explain this to people, and I was just talking to Supervisor Frost about this. There are three buckets of student and school issues. Number one are the one-on-ones that are currently allowed for a very limited number of things, including emergency psych services at the schools. Number two are the waivers that will be available for the elementary schools to be able, which we're going to make a decision on in the middle of September. And number three are middle and high schools, which will be able to open once we're two weeks off the watch list. I think we need to do more of that kind of information. I don't think the average student and family in Sacramento knows that. So that's another point that just serves random thoughts. The fourth point is that we have to learn from our experience. We've had three months, we have had six months of experience with COVID. The first three months, we were very strict. We kept our numbers very low. We were at the lowest of any per capita in the United States of America amongst major areas. We then loosened up, I think, a little bit too much. A lot of it was because the governor loosened up too much, and we had an outbreak of cases. We can no longer say we're flying by the seat of our pants. We need, we now need to be very judicious and very surgical in how we open things up. So I would ask you all, who have the organizations and the businesses in your district, to work with us and make sure that we get the information out. So for example.
They've been clamoring for it.
I know.
And I've done so many Zooms, I can't tell you.
I know, I've been on many, and I know my colleagues have as well.
Yeah. But, and we're, that's what the business navigators are for, et cetera. But what I'm saying is, we need your support when it comes to like, I'm just using as an example, bars, indoor bars. There may be certain things that we open up earlier in a surgical manner, rather than blunt manner, that we need your support on. And that's, that's all part of the planning process.
Well, I guess, I understand that, and frankly, I trust you with that part of it. I think that you've handled the openings very well, and where we all haven't, you have been very free to admit that we went a little too fast. I appreciate that. It's more of the fiscal aspects, you know, because there's where we have limited resources.
Yes.
And as we're allocating limited resources, I got to see where we're at and where we want to get. And I'm just not, and again, this is countywide, Bruce. This is, this is all the.
And I think that the spreadsheet, if you will, that we're going to be putting together for the 45 million with the $24.3 million will go a long way towards that. I should mention also to Supervisor Natale's point back before, that although we're not first in the country anymore, among the 10 most populous counties in California, we're either first or second best in our case rate. So it's still a serious rate, and that many of the big counties have had serious rates, but we're not in a terrible position in terms of California.
That's cases per population?
Per population, yeah. The 10 most populous counties.
Good, thank you. Supervisor Peters?
Do you have any indication from the state as to how close we are to getting off the watch list? And what do, and if not, what do we need to improve on to get there?
Yeah, what is the predominately of the cases now?
Right now, whoops. Right now, we are on the watch list because of our case rate.
Case rate?
Yes, that is.
100,000.
Per 100,000. It's 139 per 100,000 within the last 14 days. So that's why there's, we're putting such an emphasis on being able to get the testing, control the outbreaks, because that is what will bring that number down.
We need to have it below 100 per 100,000.
Yes, and the threshold is 100 per 100,000. So it's very difficult to tell you.
And we're where now?
We're at 139.
Which is not terrible.
Right, but it, that's why it's important. That's why I said at the beginning that we seem to have plateaued, even though there was a time when we seemed to be going down. But now it seems like we need to make a bigger push to start getting those numbers to go down.
Explain, can you explain? Many people are saying, well, the more you test, the more cases you're going to find. It seems to me that there's another statistic that needs to be.
The percent positive test.
Or formula that would make, help people understand how it works.
Yeah, so there are three components, correct me if I'm wrong, there are three components to the watch list. Number one is the cases per 100,000. You have to be under 100. And to be off the watch list, it has to be for two weeks off the watch list.
Yeah.
Okay. Secondly is hospital, is, excuse me, ICU beds and ventilators. We are okay on that in terms of we have more than 20% surplus and that. And then the third is case positivity rate. Is that right?
Yes.
Case positivity rate. So it's the number of tests and the number of percent that are positive. And we're below the 8%, which is the marker for that as well.
So if I may answer your question directly about doing more testing, because that is something that, as an argument that some people have made. The reason that testing is important is that we know that a certain percentage of people actually may have COVID-19, but either have very mild symptoms or no symptoms at all. The problem is that those people, if they don't know, they would be the ones that are most likely to spread it. If we are able to identify those people and make sure that they are isolated, the key factor to our being able to stop the spread of infection is the isolation and quarantine, as well as the mitigation factors of using the face covering and social distancing and hand sanitizing. All of those together are the ones that will help us to get the number down. But the, as Dr. Billenson mentioned, there's a case positivity, which is what's the percentage of positives you get for the number of tests that you do. And we know that there was a time that actually our number had climbed above the 8%. So we knew that there was active infection in the, in the community, regardless of whether we were doing more testing or not. But once, now that that has started going down, that is one of the indications that maybe there is some sign that maybe we're making a difference.
That seems to be the most important statistic to me.
Right, yes.
And the bottom line is, if you test, like, let's say you tested everybody, what you're going to find is, you're going to find a lot of people who are asymptomatic. You get them isolated, you get them quarantined, you contact trace them, and then you get the overall test, the overall positive rate down.
Okay.
Supervisor Frost?
Do we have any statistics on the percentage of people who test positive versus having symptoms?
7.6% of the people test positive in the last two weeks.
I'll have to get back to you on that. Our EPI program manager could probably go back and find out. Sometimes it is a bit difficult for us to get that information, especially because of the backlog that we had. Those are people that, when their state database was back on track, there are, when we got those lab results, it was too late, it was beyond the 14-day period. So those are people that we didn't interview. So we might have a percentage of people where we don't have that information. But for those that we do, we can definitely let you know. But from studies that have been done, it goes as high as maybe 40%.
30 to 40%.
Yeah.
30 to 40%. And the more you.
Thirty to 40%. And the more you the younger you are, the more transmittable you are with asymptomatic.
Are asymptomatic.
Yeah, so that's one of the reasons that high school students are a real worry is that they are much more likely to be asymptomatic. So the good news is they don't get terribly sick generally.
But I thought I thought if if 50, over 50% of the population had been exposed, test positive, that we would develop enough immunity in the community.
Herd immunity is about 60% rather than 50%, but close. But we're nowhere near. We have about.
So wouldn't it be better to let those people out that have the good immune system?
That's what Sweden has done, and that's what a couple of other countries have done. And they've actually had higher death rates than the United States. It doesn't seem to work.
The problem is that when you try to go to the using the herd immunity, you put a lot of people at risk. And especially in our population, we know of the adults, about a third of us have a chronic disease that puts us at risk, either hypertension, diabetes, obesity. And those are people who end up in the intensive care unit. Those are the people who end up dying. The other also, of course, is our population that's over the age of 65. When you look at our deaths, about 75% of the deaths that we have are in people over the age of 65. So it's very important that we find a way of being able to protect them because.
Why not isolate them?
And we have tried that.
You'd be isolating a third of the people.
But it's very difficult to isolate them. One, because if you're going to isolate, that's a third of the population. But for the older people, even those that are.
But you're isolating all the population right now.
Right, and it worked.
We're sending everyone home.
It worked, because if you recall the first time when we were able to bend the curve, it's because we had the stay at home order. But of course, everyone knows that it's difficult to maintain that for a prolonged period of time. And that is why we started with the message of the face covering, social distancing, and hand sanitizing.
Yeah, so I wanted to move this to the school, to the education, because you were sharing that information with me about the watch list and needing to be 14 days on the we need to be off the watch list for 14 days before we can open the schools. And you also made the comment that it's more likely that the charter or private schools would be able to open sooner because they have the capacity to, they're smaller, just by nature of the entity, they may be able to meet the requirements more easily.
For the waiver for the elementary schools.
Pardon me?
For the waiver for elementary schools, not for the high school and middle schools, because those are based on the.
Can you speak up, please?
Those are based on the watch list. What you're saying is, I think it is certainly reasonable to assume that the smaller private schools and the Catholic schools, for example, will be able to meet the waiver requirements for elementary schools who can be allowed to be back in session when we're on the when we're still on the watch list. When it comes to the high schools and middle schools, they are, whether they're Catholic or private or public, they are based on the watch list and being off the watch list for two weeks. That's the governor.
So my question goes to childcare versus school. Why is it okay to, why can we open childcare with specific guidelines of, you know, social distancing and masks and no food and whatever? But we can't do that for older children. And what does schooling, why does schooling make, why does one person in that classroom, if they're all six feet apart with masks and no food and under the same guidelines, why does learning make a difference?
Well, first of all, by by rule, it's an instructional, any instruction is not allowed in any of the schools if they're if you're still on the watch list. That's number one. That's the governor's.
What does instruction have to do with the pandemic? I'm just, I'm trying to understand.
The kids are being brought in to be instructed. The issue is that this high school students are notorious for mixing and matching, if you will. And there can be all the all the teachers that we want to have covering them. But if you look at southeast United States, North Carolina, Israel, a variety of places that have already restarted school, particularly their high schools and middle schools, they've had immediate cases and had to quarantine and shut back down.
Because it's hard to control them, harder to control them? Is that?
Yes.
I also want to mention that with the childcare, these are much smaller groups that you're dealing with. Many of our schools, they have thousands of students. And even with the social distancing, it's very difficult for them to maintain it. Even though they may implement the symptom screen, it's not foolproof. And we've seen an impact of that in some of the schools over on the East Coast that have opened, where they've ended up having to close because they've had multiple positives. So one of the things that we, and of course, that's partly a factor of the way that schools are designed, it's really a gathering. And it's very difficult to control people in a gathering, especially the larger the numbers are. The other thing, too, is when you have a lot of transmission going on in the community, it's much more difficult to control, much more difficult to keep out of the settings like the congregate settings like the schools. So that's why it's important for us to be able to get the numbers down, because we have a much better chance of being able to protect our children as well as the teachers. And one of the other things that we're doing with the the STEM Express contract is actually setting it up so that we can provide the teachers with regular surveillance testing on a monthly basis, because that is another way for us to be able to get catch some of those cases that may not have symptoms. So the main thing is that in schools, our gathering places, and that's the reason why at this time, it's not a very safe environment.
But we can go to Lowe's, and we can go to other places. And that's not much different.
In schools, usually the students are together for a much longer period of time. One of the reasons that it's the what you see at Lowe's is not considered a gathering is that people are not spending the time together to do the same thing. Usually, you're just passing each other in the aisle. You pick up your items and you leave.
And the exposure in schools that we're worried about, and close exposure in general, is greater than is less than six feet without masks for more than 15 minutes. And that's obviously much more likely in a school than in a Lowe's.
And the reason.
I can tell you, I've been at thousands of schools, and it's not like Lowe's.
I, the reason I ask this is because I'm getting a lot of calls from parents who are beside themselves right now, trying to figure out how they're going to manage this. And it's so this is really hard for people to understand. And I think if maybe if there's a way we can can get that message out so that people can better understand, and also so they can start planning their comeback, their come out. So they can begin planning for that. So when it's ready, they can initiate it in an orderly, safe fashion. I think it'll help us. It'll give us something to do while we're waiting.
We've been working very closely with SCOE, Olivia, myself, and Dave Gordon on this literally almost every day, like the last couple of days.
I know you are. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Tolle?
Couple of questions, if I could. You mentioned the mobile integrated health units. And we received a letter that talked about from April through end of June. Did we cease doing those July 1st?
They stopped because they were actually doing this using their own funds.
So, but we had money available, and we didn't continue that for the last six weeks?
We are, actually, we contacted them, and they are going to start up again.
Okay, I'm going to ask a question very directly. Why, we ceased because there wasn't money made available to do that? Did you request the money? Did somebody request that money? I mean, when I see the results in the letter from the hospital council today, it strikes me as there should have not been one day lapse in that because it wasn't it wasn't for funding that was available. So could I guess I'm really concerned when I see that. I just was reading through some of the correspondence that came in recently this afternoon.
Yes, and that is part of what we had put in in the 45 million.
Okay.
But is that after the fact, right?
Yeah, but it's after the fact. But the point is, is that what we heard last week is that people, whatever you asked for was made available, if it should have been. I mean, I'm not looking to blame. I want to know why, though. Now we're into the third week of August. We had a very successful effort, and it ceased. I had no idea that it ceased. If somebody told me that we weren't doing it, then I would have asked the question. I mean, I'm just saying it's on me or any members of this board, but that concerns me that we had that lapse. It was successful. They encountered 4,600 patients, conducted 4,500 tests, and turned up 142 COVID. But we ended June 30th. So for the last seven weeks now, we haven't done this. And money was available. Let me ask you, so did you or Dr. Billenson ask for money beyond the 45 million, which is on the docket today? Did you ask specifically, make sure that was continued? Was a request in there towards the end of June? Did somebody ask for that money?
Not separately, no.
Okay.
So you didn't take it to the committee?
So it was part of the 45 million, and I explained last week what what happened when we submitted it through our process. We were told that the committee was not accepting any.
But did you actually apply?
We applied through our process, so that's what I'm saying.
I don't know what that means. Did you make an application to the committee?
Right, so we wrote up the 45 million. We send it through our fiscal people. And the response that we got is that at this time, they're not accepting any requests.
Supervisor, no, no request came to the committee for that was mobile units?
Thank you. So no request came to the committee. It's what Mr. Whitestaff is saying. I believe that's what you said after the board meeting last week, too.
She said she was told that the committee was not accepting applications.
Correct.
What I'm concerned about then.
Was that true? At any time, did the committee not accept applications?
That is not true, and I don't want to get argumentative about this, but there was no direction from the committee that we were no longer taking applications.
Actually, it was on the contrary. We were looking for how to get this money out. So I know we keep coming back to this. And I know with the testimony, everything else said, nothing came in.
Okay, did, but in beyond just saying submit a request, did, did, I guess, I don't know if you would have at your level be doing this, but Bruce, did somebody say, are there things out there that you were doing earlier in the spring that you need to continue to do? I mean, it's one thing to get a bulk request for 45 million, but I don't know what segment this is of that. But here you got this important effort. We have community partners. We have fire districts and so forth. And because of whatever breakdown in communication, however that occurred, we haven't been doing it for the last seven weeks. I'm going to tell you, as a public policy maker, I'm concerned about that. But whoever.
Supervisor Tolle, I mean, understood. We, it's, I don't know why we would have stopped. I honestly don't, but we are where we are today, and the request is in here.
So we can call them up tomorrow and say, let's get back on the road?
Yes.
Call them this afternoon. I'm sorry, I mean.
I think Supervisor Tolle and Board.
It's pretty stark to me, I guess. Go ahead.
I think here's the elephant in the room, is that there is a disconnect that has happened on this. And I think what I'm hearing is that there are some assumptions that got made at some level. I don't know why they would have made the assumption when the money's there. Everybody knows CARES Act is. What we're going to do is with Dr. Billenson and Bruce and our fiscal folks, we're going to make sure that we're monitoring it. We're working with them closely. And if there's any service that is being discontinued, we need to know why are you discontinuing it? And what's the purpose behind it? As I stated last week, I'll state it again today, we will make any money available to fight this. And if there is a reason that they want to stop, then there's a reason to stop. But if we're doing something, let's not stop. Let's continue doing what we're doing. So I don't know what else to offer to help with this.
And on top of that, I'll just add that as Chair of the Board, I fully intend, I've had conversations with Dr. Cassiri. She and I are going to have weekly detailed conversations, so I've got my finger on the pulse of it as well.
And I guess, you know, when I hear, you know, certainly Supervisor Frost isn't the only one or just getting calls about the schools and so forth, we're trying to, you know, make, you know, to do everything to protect public health and safety. And here we have a program that was going out to the community, really successful. You know, we're now in lockdown. We can't open schools and so forth. I don't know whether this would have changed that stat or not, but I think it certainly would have helped us. And and we were devoid of this effort. Again, I find that kind of hard to accept, whatever the reasoning behind it. Because it kind of goes back to, you know, I think what, you know, our nurses and others, you know, on our frontline team with the county, our partners, I mean, it was no time for a breakdown in communication because the money was there. That's the thing. And so however that didn't get translated, and I think there's an obligation that goes beyond what the request coming up through the chain is to not just say, well, is there anything you need?
No, but Supervisor Tolle, hold on, man. It's not what you need. It wasn't that.
Yeah.
It was whatever you need, we did not anticipate that somebody would stop. If they stopped doing something, there had to be a reason to stop. But it wasn't like we were just saying, well, tell us what you need. We were monitoring it, but if they made a decision, and the decision doesn't get communicated up, there is an issue there that we need to look into, and we will. But this wasn't just that, well, tell us what you need and then go away. That's not what we were trying to do.
No, I wasn't saying that.
No, I know you're not, but I just want to make sure the perception. And for whatever reason, if we got where we are today, this is very frustrating. I mean, we had the money. We wanted to be nimble. We bring you retro items. We have given the green light. We've suspended a lot of the stuff that we would have typically done. We would have never allowed some of these purchasing things to go through, relying on folks to get us the information. Whether somebody got told yes or no, I, to me, it's just extremely frustrating that why would somebody take that answer and say, that's it, I can't ask for anything? When everybody in the county, everybody in the county, we're at 350 million in requests. Everybody got that. Again, I'm trying to assign blame, but it's just frustrating. I need to have the conversation again, is if you're getting that kind of feedback, communicate it to department head, communicate somewhere. Don't stop something until you think it's not working.
What we're, again, you know, since we're getting into this a little bit, were Dr. Kane, Dr. B invited to the committee to make a presentation?
Don, I, Supervisor Tolle, I mean, there's a big misconception on the committee and all that kind of stuff. All right, here's the basic on the committee. You have the IRS regs. People are sending stuff in that they need. All the committee was doing is, does this meet the IRS regs? Can we claim the money or not? That's all the committee does. It wasn't yay, nay, I'm going to do it. If it doesn't meet that, is it better for us to do a FEMA route? Is it better for us to do the grants? That's all the committee was doing. Committee was not saying yay or nay on stuff on that. If it does not meet coronavirus, then it will go back. But most requests, that's what they were doing. And it was to see which is the path that gets us the money quickest for us.
Can I ask another question, though, about that? Does that mean then necessarily now that if, you know, you've you've kind of looked at it through those lenses that you just mentioned, the IRS, the Treasury regs, that there's every opportunity outside of the discussion through the construct of the committee for public health or any other department that needs, that has a need that amounts to an expense, to come to you, to come to Bruce and say, we have this need, we have this expense. We understand it doesn't meet the regs, but we still have the need. So tell us how you're going to help us.
And that path is there through the budget process. We get requests all the time that, hey, I want to expense them. Can we do this? So that, to your point, absolutely, affirmatively, yes.
And I guess if I could add, Nav, Supervisor to your question, in my case, I'm in touch with department heads every day, multiple times every day, asking the very question that you're posing here, including Dr. Billenson, multiple times every day, because this thing is fluid. This thing is changing, and needs change. So you have to have that kind of constant communication, which we've had.
And again, just one more point on that. Whether somebody came to the committee or not, that was not the issue for us. Dr. Billenson's been talking to Dr. Cassiri. Billenson is talking to Bruce. Our CFO is involved in it. The people that were, often this committee thing has become, well, what about the committee? As I mentioned yesterday, supervisor, I mean, last week Supervisor Kennedy asked a question. The people on the committee were the deputies, who were in direct communication with their department heads, what are the needs they have? And there were three other people that were in there, and their purpose was finance to make sure, because this got to meet the single audit. So whatever we're saying we're going to do it, is the Treasury going to allow or they're going to disallow? And our concern on the disallowance on that one is, you know, we only have 19 million in fund balance. So if something gets disallowed, it's coming out of general fund, which means if we exceed that, it's a cut somewhere. Don't want to do that. Second person that was on there, not again to say yes or no, was that if requests are coming in for staffing, personnel needed to know right away that there's a request. coming in for staffing, personnel needed to know right away that there's a request coming in and they got to move through it quickly. This is not something that we're going to take four weeks, study it, request came in, get it going, get them the staff that they need. And the last person on there that I'd mentioned was Brett Ferguson. He's a CFO. And if, to your point exactly, that if it falls outside, that we don't have the money, but it's critical, is there another way we can get to it?
They don't have the CARES funding.
We do not have the CARES funding.
Right.
Yeah. Is there another path for us to solve that problem for them? That's what they were doing. They were not debating the merit. They're not saying that. They're just, in that, that was the focus on it. And what I've learned, lessons taken on this from last week, is there is bad communication somewhere and I need to fix it. I need to stop having these conversations about somebody told me. And again, it's in one unit. I don't know how else to say it. I'm not trying to assign blame, but this is the only unit we've had an issue with. And callers might call in and say, well, there's other places this could happen. I don't know that. But what I have in front of me is this issue. Now find out that after six weeks, we stopped doing the testing or whatever the item is. I mean, that's disturbing.
Well, and again, I appreciate the response. I guess as I read the paragraph in the letter here today, I'm going to hark it back to you and I can't, none of us knew anything about what happened yesterday or what didn't happen. But we had this effort that stood up within 10 days, according to the hospital systems, working with our public health department. We implemented from April 1st through June 30th. We were going out to the most vulnerable, to folks that actually have showed up on those who perished because there is high risk. We're talking about skilled nursing facilities and congregate living situations, assisted living centers, memory care units, behavioral health facilities. That's where they were going to. On July 1st, we stopped doing that in this community. I'm not looking to place blame, but I believe people probably died because of that, because they didn't get tested. That's my assumption. It may be a bad assumption. What, I guess my expectation is we leave here today because, you know, things were in my mind, were going along okay here today. As I reflected on this, though, that is more than just a breakdown in communication. That's a disservice to the people we all serve. I'll take a level of responsibility for that as a board member here. But if we had something that was working, that was helping people get tested, turning it around, potentially saving lives, and it stopped at the beginning of the fiscal year, it's going to start up again, that's great. I want, they ought to start tomorrow morning, start tonight as far as I'm concerned. But that really hits me in the heart because what that means, that people were at risk and they didn't need to be. It wasn't a money thing. And if, I don't know if there are any other areas where we fell short, but that's pretty glaring in my estimation. And again, I'll accept responsibility. I'm not placing blame on anybody in this room, but by God, that should never have happened. If we had, we should have been having more units if we could, you know, it should not have been about money. If we had this partnership with the hospitals, with the fire services, health providers, our public health, then we should have been going full steam ahead and that very, very vulnerable population should have been served, including the healthcare workers that work in those facilities. And we should have had the capacity to do that. And we haven't done that for the last seven weeks, if I understand correctly. If I'm wrong on any of those facts, then tell me so. But that, again, strikes me as pretty stark. That's all I have.
Supervisor Frost.
It seems like you did an amazing job through this whole pandemic, getting the money where it needed to go, getting the resources where they needed to go. And we're here today to approve something that you've been approving on your own without us. I don't know why we're here today to approve this special item because you've been, I mean, we've, we approved, gave you the authority to manage the CARES Act money. So I'm not sure why they didn't come to, why Dr. Cassiri, why the communications didn't happen, but they got fixed and we're, you know, they probably could have gotten fixed faster than waiting for a meeting even, in my opinion. Am I correct? I mean, we didn't need to go through all this.
That two-pronged one is anytime we need to bring something to the board, absolutely we'll bring it to the board. So that's not, so my nature, my comment back to you is absolutely. If we'd have known this and I had a conversation with-
Could have happened. Could have been fixed a long time ago.
I spoke with Supervisor Serna last Friday when we were putting all this stuff together. And I told him, I said, absolutely, you guys ask for it, we'll come to you. As far as I'm concerned, you don't need today. You have the green light.
Yeah.
They have the green light. Every department here has had the green light.
So hopefully in the future, they'll know they can come to you guys and get it taken care of. They don't have to do it through us. That's not what we do.
But yet, but yet at the end of the last meeting on the 11th, those two individuals, Dr. Cassiri and Dr. Billenson stood where they are today and debated figures, 90 million, 40 million, 45 million, 20 million, 25 million? I know my constituents are confused. I was confused. Nothing in writing that I'd ever seen-
Well, that was inappropriate.
Hold on, nothing in writing, in terms of anything I've ever seen from our public health officer. That's why we're here today. Supervisor Kennedy.
Well, I think that the Chair said it, but-
Could you use a microphone, Ted?
Sorry. Yeah, I think that if there was anything that came out of the last couple of meetings, it's that there has not been enough, and I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. We set up a system. It didn't work. There hasn't been enough transparency. We haven't had enough information. We're confused up here, trying to make important decisions, spending 100 million plus dollars. We're not giving clear direction to our staff. I don't think we're meeting, you know, we're having too many meetings. I don't think we're discussing it enough. And, you know, this is something that we as policymakers, we as elected officials, it rests on us. The buck stops here. So we can't sit here and yell at staff and tell them they're doing a great job.
I mean, it literally took us, it took us months. It took us months of asking for CARES Act.
I've been asking for this information for months.
I don't feel confused at all.
I am saying that I don't see malfeasance here, but I do see a breakdown in the process. And the board has to interject itself in the process at this point to help fix it.
And that's why we're here.
Okay. May I speak, Chair?
Go.
I do not feel confused. I feel we had a very precise protocol set in place. We opened our Office of Emergency Services. We had regular reports back. Everybody was on the same page and we understood how it was unfolding. There were a couple of people who apparently didn't get the memo, the same memo or something, didn't understand the memo. And that's fine. We're fixing it. So I don't feel like we were trying to do, you know, the staff were trying to do anything wrong or like this is, I think, I think this is made into something bigger than it needed to be. I think it's a matter of just understanding the protocol and who to go to to get things done and putting those protocols in place so that next time, you know, everybody's on the same page and everyone's getting what they need to make sure that we're responding the best way we can. I don't think anything like this can be perfect and it's hard to expect it to be perfect. We're all doing the best we can. And I think a good way to look at it is to learn, you know, in, I've been in business for 35 or 40 years in business. We learn, we adjust, we move on, we move up. And it's going to be great. It's going to get better. And we just need to go from here and try harder.
Before we go to Supervisor Nattoli, I'll just say, nothing could be more obvious that something is broken, something is wrong, when one supervisor says what they just said after another supervisor to her left says, I don't know if I'm assuming this correctly, but people died because of this. Those, the distance between those two opinions about this issue tells me as Chair, absolutely this meeting had to happen. It had to happen. It's happening now. We're having an honest, open discussion. We're going to hear from the public in a moment, but you've got to be kidding me.
You're a little dramatic.
You got, if you got to be kidding me, if you think that this was somehow done transparently, this was somehow done to some level of perfection, absolutely not. Are you kidding me?
No.
Don, did you want to say anything?
I've got some people that want to speak.
All right. Before we go to public comment, Senator Pan from the 6th District, he and I shared a phone conversation, an open, honest, transparent phone conversation. I'm glad he reached out to me last week. He was made aware of the memo that I asked Dr. Cassiri to write to the board with the request. That is the subject of today's hearing. He had intended to originally try and make it here, as he has in the past, to issue remarks on a public health matter, as his profession is medicine. And he has respectfully asked me to read his letter into the record, so I'm going to do so. It's a letter dated August 18th. Subject is support for additional funding for COVID-19 response. Dear Supervisor Serna, I am writing in support of Sacramento County Public Health Officer Dr. Olivia Cassiri's request for 45 million in additional funding to reduce the spread of COVID-19 infection in Sacramento County. These funds are essential for frontline, frontline efforts to, one, increase testing capacity by expanding public health laboratory services for 5,000 tests per month to 9,000 tests per month. Two, expand workforce focused on processing laboratory specimens, conducting contact tracing, administering and processing tests, and conducting community outreach and education. Three, work with community partners to provide wraparound services to disadvantaged communities. Four, support and enhance mitigation efforts of our county's businesses. And five, support community vaccination clinics for the influenza season. Sacramento County's COVID-19 rates continue to inch up and the county public health department should be the first priority for funding. However, the health department has only received a small fraction of federal monies given to the county for COVID-19 response. The federal government through the CARES Act made funding available to local health departments to fight the coronavirus pandemic. I urge the Board of Supervisors to rectify this situation and the first step towards that is approving Dr. Cassiri's request for adequate fiscal support. The novel coronavirus is not going away and a strong public health department is even more essential to public safety during this pandemic. Sacramento County must prepare now, not only to contain the current spread of the virus, but also prepare for potentially worse second wave of coronavirus coinciding with influenza season that annually hospitalizes half a million Americans. I urge the Board of Supervisors to approve Dr. Cassiri's request for 45 million in funding this year and to anticipate funding additional public health interventions to contain COVID-19 so Sacramento County can eventually reopen our schools and businesses and restore jobs. Sincerely, Richard Pan, M.D., M.P.H., State Senator, 6th District. Okay. Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have?
Right now, you have 14.
14 speakers, okay.
The phone lines are still open.
Okay. And it'll be three minutes.
Okay. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon and thank you for, thank you for this opportunity. This is Blake Young, President of Sacramento Food Bank and Family Services. As you know, we, we submitted a request of 1.5 million dollars to help the Sacramento Food Bank and Family Services, which is the county food bank that serves pre-COVID 150,000 people a month through 220 agencies. However, since March, there's been 100% demand increase. And in fact, last month, we had 300,000 people that were, were helping. By funding Sacramento Food Bank and Family Services during this pandemic means that you're supporting all the agencies throughout the county supplying food from the Delta through Folsom, up above Rio Linda and everybody in Sacramento County. Unfortunately, your county food bank has lost three major fundraisers since the pandemic occurred, including major food drives. We lost our second largest fundraising event and we're going to have to modify Run to Feed the Hungry as a result of it. That net loss could, could look to be over $2 million. Sacramento Food Bank and Family Services has not asked for help. As you can see by the proposal, most support comes from private individuals and businesses. Other county food banks, and there are many, have received substantial CARES funding. In fact, our neighbors in Yolo received almost a million dollars, which only has 15% of the people that they are serving compared to us. And they are, they have another proposal in that looks like it's going to get approved as well. To be clear, Sacramento Food Bank and Family Services has placed a request to the city as well for funding. The CARES funding was meant to provide endemic resources for people. I can't think of a more critical issue than nourishing individuals and families. We know that minority households suffer disproportionately. Seniors, children, and single mothers are impacted greatly. I can't tell you how many heart-wrenching stories of hunger we can hear that are overwhelming. We ask you to provide this funding so that Sacramento Food Bank and Family Services can remain stable and provide food resources to over 150 active food pantries and feed close to 300,000 people during this pandemic. Appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Jose Gonzalez, Jr. and I'm the Youth Coordinator for Self-Audience and Recovery, an organization that has a mission to reduce the recidivism rate of youth and adults from reoffending while at the same time providing a safe environment of healing from the traumatic experiences that cause their behavior. Today, I want to share that the youth in our communities need that emotional support that they are not receiving because of the COVID-19 isolation. I know firsthand the power of isolation from lived experiences in my past. And that is not a healthy environment for anyone, let alone a youth in the community. The youth in our communities need that emotional connection and support to be able to uplift their spirits and grow and mature as law-abiding citizens. It is imperative and necessary to continue to provide the support that the youth need because the youth today are broken, isolated, and neglected because of COVID-19 restrictions. That is not acceptable. Today, SAR provides a safe environment for youth in our communities, as well as juvenile offenders and youth offenders from being released from the Department of Juvenile Justice and state prisons to be able to heal from the traumatic experiences through evidence-based healing workshops. SAR has been providing services to youth and needs to continue to provide these services on a greater scale to continue to empower the youth. And that's why the funding is imperative today, so that SAR and other community-based organizations can continue to expand the services on a bigger scale and serve more youth to become productive citizens. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Mary Pat Hawley. I am a physician, recently retired from Kaiser Permanente. I currently volunteer at UC Davis as a volunteer clinical professor and at the Sacramento County Public Health as a member of the Sacramento Medical Reserve Corps. I would like to testify in favor of Dr. Cassiri in fully funding the public health department. I currently answer calls from county residents, business owners, and others on the COVID hotline. I'm also certified and participate in case investigations and contact tracing. I see every day how hard the physicians, nurses, and support staff at public health work with their limited resources. As a volunteer, I know firsthand how much time it takes to empathetically and effectively communicate and educate all of those who call us for advice, how much time it takes to be sure that they understand the importance of isolation, quarantine, and contact tracing, and how trying it is to work without a reasonable turnaround time on testing and the needed referral resources. You may say all the information is out there, but many don't pay attention until it hits their home and the hotline serves that purpose. their home and the hotline serves that purpose. I strongly support Dr. Casiri and fully funding the Sacramento County Health Department so that it can meet the needs of this pandemic and of future public health needs. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment on support for public health.
Thank you.
Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Courtney Hanson, and Phil Serna is my representative. I know I'm watching the whole meeting and everyone's blood pressure is rising, and I know it's uncomfortable to take responsibility for this. I urge this board to not become defensive, to not blame this understaffed, underfunded, and overworked health department for Nav Gill's mismanagement and this board's lack of leadership. So thank you, Kennedy, for accepting some responsibility. That's the only way forward. Thank you, Natoli, for your outrage, which is only logical. And I want this board to know that while it's particularly acute during a pandemic, this board's budget-making always determines people's life chances. You truly do have people's lives in your hands, and I have so much gratitude for the courageous and life-saving leadership coming out of the health department right now amidst this chaos. And I want to highlight some of Pamela Harris's comments, which I hope you read, which are in the record. "Nav, Bruce, and Kim Nava have fostered an environment of intimidation, bullying, and dismissiveness toward our health officer, Dr. Casiri, and the public health team from the very beginning of this response." Here's an example: "One day, I lightly tapped on Dr. K's door and then walked in noticing she was on the phone. I heard Nav loudly yelling at her through the phone and quickly closed the door and walked out. This behavior was unprofessional and totally unacceptable. Nav has slandered our team by floating untruths, saying things such as 'The public health staff is out of control.' I'm curious as to why he would feel this way. Is it because our team is largely highly educated women with brains and the expertise to successfully do their jobs? Or is he projecting these ideas because we have the courage and integrity to speak up for what is right, demand that we be treated respectfully and professionally, and to advocate for the needs of our community? Or is he upset that he cannot silence our voices in deference to his unchecked authority?" An additional illustration of his unprofessional and obstructive behavior occurred when the former county health officer was contacted and asked if they could come and assist in the COVID response. The team was excited because she had worked with them for the past five years on remarkably successful projects. However, when Nav learned that she had returned to work, she was abruptly released at his direction in the middle of a pandemic for what appeared to be Nav's personal feelings toward this doctor, preventing the brain trust of two accomplished health officers, one of whom had ushered this county through the H1N1 pandemic for what appears to be no justifiable reason. Please do not place any blame on our health professionals for this mismanagement. And please note that the bigger issue is not going away. We know this is the tip of the iceberg. We still want to see all of the details of how Mr. Gill made these decisions, and we still need to have a bigger community discussion, which should have happened today on this agenda, about this board's budget priorities and oversight of the county executive, whose job should actually be on the line, frankly, because of this horrific mismanagement. Thank you."
Thank you.
Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Evan Minton. I'm a constituent of Supervisor Stu Frost and have been for the better part of 16 years. I just have what I think is a reasonable request, but wanted to make sure to do my part and go on record. I just wanted to ask that we prioritize the upcoming eviction crisis, the current food insecurity crisis, and other health and human needs over everything else in the budget right now. Well, these are not needs that directly impact me. They are moral issues that I feel need to be prioritized and addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lisa, and I'm a resident of Sacramento County. I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for holding the meeting today to talk about the CARES Act funding. I'd like to make it clear, while I understand the catalyst for today's meeting is actually the CARES funding, the cornerstone of this issue is nothing new. There's a lack of value. There is a lack of prioritization for public health in Sacramento County. You see, you can look at a budget and tell an organization's priorities. When you look at the budget for Sacramento County, public health tends to always fall behind. We have this pattern of providing the lion's share of our funding to the Sheriff's Department. This pattern is so embedded in Sacramento County that we did this in the midst of a pandemic. In the midst of a pandemic, we gave the lion's share of our funding to the sheriff. That speaks volumes about our priorities, and quite frankly, I'm embarrassed. So now here we are, $45 million to Dr. Olivia Casiri, and we're expected to spend that overnight. I have full confidence that the Division of Public Health will do its best to take care of this community, but I do ask the Board of Supervisors to have oversight of this space. We should look at where this money has been spent. Where did Nav prioritize these dollars, and will he be held accountable? Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
My name is Chad Hewitt. I am the President and CEO of the Center at the Sierra Health Foundation. Good afternoon, Chair Serna and members of the Board of Supervisors. Can we start by saying that we appreciate that you have heard and responded to the concerns raised by community residents, activists, and nonprofit organizations specifically regarding to the CARES Act appropriations? The Center at Sierra Health Foundation and other community organizations have a long history of partnering with the county, and we all stand ready to assist those who are experiencing the downside of this pandemic, which is everyone. But even more specifically, those who are disproportionately experiencing the harm this pandemic has caused, to ensure they get the full range of assistance and support that they need. You've heard Dr. K talk about not only doing contact tracing, but being able to help people isolate, to ensure that they are the essential breadwinner in their family, and they are an essential worker, that those concerns that naturally come from being able to quarantine when you hold those responsibilities can also be addressed. We at the Center support the public health approach laid out by Dr. K and Dr. Billington, and want to acknowledge her leadership in particular, and courage in fashioning a response under what has sure to have been challenging circumstances. I hope that you all go back and watch these proceedings, because they are quite indicative of what is clearly a larger problem that's going on in this particular county. We ask that this board immediately approve her request, stay connected to ensure the rapid implementation of her plan is conducted, require health expertise be represented on our COVID committee, and monitor closely any future state or federal funding received by the county to ensure that it is put to its intended purpose as rapidly as possible. A pandemic leaves no time for confusion. It leaves no time for folks to be disorganized, because lives and livelihoods are in fact at stake. Supervisor Natoli, I really appreciate your concern, your righteous indignation that we have not moved more quickly and faster to do all we can in this situation. Finally, we believe Dr. K's plan provides the best hope for families, communities, students, and businesses to protect their health while putting on a road towards building a more equitable and healthy future. We're all tired of being cooped up and locked in. But we know that without a public health response that's funded to be successful, the state that we're experiencing now will continue longer than it otherwise would have to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Right now?
Yes.
All right. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name's Crystal Harding. I'm representing Districts 1, 3, and 4. There's sort of an overlap. I'm also one of the organizations with the Care for the People budget or ask. I'm also a Liberty Towers program lead for the Black Child Legacy Incubator, serving North Highlands, Fido Farms, McCullen, Antelope, Citrus Heights, and surrounding areas, and we strongly support Dr. Casiri's exceptional leadership, proposal, and request for CARES funding. Liberty Towers is also now a testing site, has been for three weeks since August 3rd. At minimum, we've had 120 people come through, and our max so far has been 156. There's definitely a demand for this resource. And as a staple in community, we have been able to provide COVID relief in partnership with the BCL Network, food distribution, essential items in PPE, navigation and support services for community members, diapers, wipes, formulas, Revers5, and WIC, United Way through the Donate for Sacramento. Nineteen of our families were able to receive $500 in funding to spend how they needed in response to COVID. We worked with the Sheriff's Department and Rayleigh's to serve and deliver food and other goods to our seniors. And with our youth, we offer virtual pop-ups through #SacU's Sit Challenge, where our prize patrol, we deliver drop-off, where we deliver prizes, food, and other items that our young folks enjoy so that they can shelter in place safely. We also have a Teen Mental Health and Safety Youth Advisory Board, where we listen and hear the voice of our youth, their experiences, and solutions. We need more. Our youth and families are struggling, experiencing mental health challenges, trauma, and adverse conditions, and we need your substantial, meaningful investment in people and programs that work. They're connected directly with community members and able to help them thrive during COVID and beyond. We have had families reach out who are unhoused, recently evicted, experiencing homelessness, food insecure, loss of employment, transportation needs. There's a digital divide, especially transitioning back into a distance learning for schools. We've had so many folks respond and ask for help. They are uncertain of what to do if a family member tests positive for COVID, and we encourage you and employ that you all have compassion and empathy and put yourselves in your constituent's shoes. Consider if it was your family or relatives. We know you'll do the right thing, and we thank you for your time, your leadership, and what is to come. We trust you, and we know you will serve us well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm calling today as a manager in public health who has worked for the Division for 25 years, and I'm also a daughter of this community, born and raised in Sacramento. I'm calling to offer my support for my public health colleagues, my staff, and Dr. Casiri, who have worked tirelessly since the beginning of this pandemic without adequate resources. I'm asking, does the decisions you make today guarantee that public health receives those long-needed resources? And while I do not work directly on COVID response teams, I did authorize the deployment of a significant number of my staff in my chain of supervision. Of the 33 people in my chain of supervision, 50% of them have assisted with the COVID response since March by providing staffing support at Catlexo and other testing sites, as well as working in the lab, entering results, and local state reporting information, and assisting with answering and responding to community calls. We all came together to do this because we understood that we all had to work together if we wanted to have any chance of beating back this pandemic. I wanted to close by expressing how proud I am of the dedication of my colleagues and staff to fighting this pandemic and express my gratitude for the leadership and integrity of Dr. Casiri. She has shown her integrity throughout this effort, and we appreciate the leadership and she has been in support of staff. I am concerned, though, as I've watched this board meeting, I feel that she has been being scapegoated, and while people keep saying, "We're not going to play flames," it feels like things are falling back on her. She has stated, not only today, but last week, that she followed the process that she was given to make the request for funding, and she was told that the committee was not accepting the request. And so respectfully, Mr. Gill just asked, "Why did public health not keep asking for what they needed?" But my question would be, that in light of being a public health emergency, why did Nav Gill, as the highest executive in our county, not make sure that the committee sought out information for the needs of public health, since public health is the primary entity that's leading the response? I thank Supervisor Kennedy, Serna, and Natoli for your calls for transparency, and thank you for letting me speak today.
Thank you.
Caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Thanks for this opportunity to speak to you. My name is Greg Fishman. I'm a candidate for county supervisor in District 3 and a member of the SMUD Board of Directors. My comments today are mine alone. From the time I was a journalist who often covered this board in years past to now, as I serve on the SMUD Board, open and accessible government has always been important to me. I know it is to you as well. You've already discussed this at length, and I won't belabor the point, but in this case, more transparency and communication might have avoided a long list of misunderstandings, both internal and external. So now you're discussing whether or not to allocate more of the CARES Act funding to the direct fight against COVID-19. The case has clearly been made by your public health officials. Our county needs more testing, more contact tracing, more personal protective equipment, and other things and devices and programs to help slow the spread of the disease. So in addition, thousands of Sacramento County residents are also facing food insecurity and eviction because federal support and augmentation to unemployment has run out. The Judicial Council is now limiting the eviction moratorium, so renters and the landlords who own their properties and have their own mortgages to pay are suffering, or are potentially suffering. I believe that keeping people in their homes during this pandemic should be a priority. People who are already homeless are even more vulnerable. We all know how complex an issue that is, but any additional help for those least fortunate among us for hygiene and housing and other services is also needed. Look, I acknowledge the list of needs may be longer than the dollars available, but there are also small businesses and mental health issues that need additional help in the wake of COVID-19. And finally, I'll wrap up with this. The pandemic is hitting underserved communities especially hard. The Latinx community, African-Americans, recent immigrants are disproportionately making up high numbers of cases compared to the general population. They are also harder to reach with information and the programs and services that can help reduce the spread of COVID-19 in their communities. So as you deliberate how to allocate these dollars, please continue to consider the underserved communities that communities that need your help the most. I would urge the county also to look into a closer relationship with SMUD's Sustainable Communities Initiative. I do not have time to fully explain that here, but simply put, it is our effort to reach out to underserved communities more effectively, and also to convene other organizations and local governments to put our resources into a coherent and hopefully more effective plan to serve those in our communities who need it the most. And the channels that we are building now will help in the long run, as Dr. Pan noted, if there is a resurgence of the virus, a second wave later this year, and also when hopefully we develop a vaccine, and we will need these channels to deliver that effectively to these underserved communities. I thank you for your time and your deliberations on these efforts, and I do appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Oh, hi. My name is Mackenzie Wilson, and I hope everyone's having a great day. I'm not going to say thanks, because the truth is, is that I've been speaking in this space for over a year now, and I get the privilege of being able to come in and say "we told you so." I hope that you guys are humbled by this meeting today. $45 million on the table is $147 million too late. I know that we asked in the very beginning for community inputs and community communication, and I know that I have been talking to this board about the accessibility of these meetings and these spaces for over a year now. I hope that you sit extremely humbled and that you can stop pointing the fingers at NAV, even though NAV Gill, you should be fired. But I need you guys to be holding these fingers at yourself because it is your willingness to give the control to someone else that allows for such things to happen. So all five of you sitting behind those seats, they are at fault. People have died because of your lack of oversight. People have been exposed because of your lack of oversight. People are unhoused, people are worried about their bills, people are worried about their children because of your lack of oversight. A year ago, we entered this building and said that your budget is a reflection of your values. A year ago, the Carcerate Sacramento entered this building and said that 72% of our general fund going to the Criminal Justice Department in Sacramento County is, that's one fucked-up value. People are out here hungry. And the truth is, is when we need housing and education and parks and libraries, guess where that money's going to have to come from? The Sheriff's Department. So here today, we can thank you for finally possibly giving Dr. Kay the money that she asked for days ago, but again, I'm not going to say thank you. I'm going to say "we told you so." I'm going to remind you one more time that I really hope that you're humbled and that you're going to check yourselves from now on. You, every single one of you have our email address. We would love to chat with you, talk about the right way to do this budget, because $45 million now, we're still talking about a $4.4 billion budget in a couple of weeks. And until Nav Gill is fired, I'm going to see a budget that looks like what Nav Gill has been doing for the last, for the last couple of years. I really hope that we figure out what to do with the $45 million, but the truth is, is that this is the beginning of COVID for us. And so the CARES Act money is gone, and our general fund is where it's going to come from next. And the only solution to COVID is housing, healthcare, mental health services, things like that. I think it's interesting that I live in a county where restaurants were opened up before my public library work.
Can you conclude your remarks, please?
Yes. I think I yelled it last time, but I won't, I won't be so crass. Please do better. Like, these are our lives that you guys are not holding yourselves accountable to, and I'm terrified of the budget that we're going to see soon.
Thank you.
You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Jim Gonzalez. I'm the Chair of Latino Economic Council, and I'm a
Jim, you're breaking up. We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Give it one more try here.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Go ahead, please.
Okay, okay. Jim Gonzalez, Chair, Latino Economic Council. In a time of pandemic, especially one that this country is, that the world has not experienced in 100 years, there are no easy answers, and there are missteps. And I appreciate the position that you are in, and appreciate your commitment to making things right. I join with leaders of the Black and Latino community in offering to work closely with the Board of Supervisors in reaching the communities most affected by this pandemic, which are essential workers, people that don't have the choice to stay home and work, and have, and live in multi-generational households, and expose themselves to contamination at all points. What you have before you is public health recommendations. Public health recommendations are the ones that Board of Supervisors are entrusted with, and I know you will do the right thing. I support the $45 million in additional CARES funding, and the Latino community stands ready to work with the Public Health Department and the county administration so that this money truly reaches those communities that are most affected. I thank you, Supervisor Serna, for calling to this special meeting. It's a difficult meeting, but it's a meeting that could lead us to a path where more lives are saved. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have three minutes.
Go ahead, please. Go ahead, please.
Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Caller, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. Hi. My name is Valia King. I am a lifelong resident of Sacramento County. I believe I'm with the area code 95670, I believe, and I'm in the Holy District. And anything, I just wanted to make sure that I called in to express my very sincere concerns about hearing how this budget was allocated when it came to addressing a pandemic. If anything, living in California, I was somewhat secure knowing that there was some common sense in trying to address the pandemic and making sure that residents were taken care of, that folks had options, and actually having some cause for concern. However, then finding that my local representative decided that it was best to allocate funding to law enforcement rather than directing a lot of the funding to actual public health is very concerning, especially as a Black woman, and seeing this disproportionately represent Black and Brown communities. So if anything, I want to implore you all to do the right thing, to address this pandemic head-on. And as a matter of like public policy and public health, this is absolutely necessary. And yes, that's all I have for now, but please, please do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name's Terry Klausert, and I am just wondering, and I'm wondering if there's a reason that NAV did not go directly to public health first and ask what they needed in regards to the CARES funding? I'm not sure why you would offer the money to other departments before making sure your public health department was going to get what was needed to care for the community. It seems like the process that was set up should have been more proactive and not reactive in requesting the funds, because it also sounds like that just because a request met certain requirements, that it got funded. It doesn't mean, just because it meets those requirements does not mean it's the most needed services. And it seems like that's what's happened with the Sheriff's Department. And I just also need to say, I'm very impressed with Dr. Kay and all her proactive work that she has done with the community agencies that she talked about today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, my name is George. I'm a veteran, concerned veteran in the county of Sacramento, and I've been looking at these meetings for the last couple of days, couple of weeks, and I'm really disappointed. You know, as a veteran, the health department's like going to war without bullets. The pandemic is real, and when you have people who actually both be controlling the money to the health department, and they're having all kinds of difficulties, all kinds of disconnect, you know, it's a real shame. And when you, when I'm looking at this board, it's only three individuals up there that are actually talking about this thing, and there's two there that probably be the friend with the Sheriff's Department, with NAV, and I think NAV should be fired. I really do. And myself, as a veteran, I am really, really disappointed. You know, where you have a pandemic that's almost killed more people in World War I, World War II, Vietnam, and the Gulf War. You know, it's really a shame to even sit down and listen to this because I get so goddamn mad about this whole thing. And I'm hoping that the supervisor, you will take responsibility as far as oversight of giving that money to the health department so they could do their job the way it's supposed to be done. This is taking too long, and just like Donna Toney said, there have been life lost because of this. You know, I think NAV should be fired, and I think that you need to look at the budget and get it right. You know, family members, your family members, my family members, it's important to us that we need to make this right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. So I wasn't able to connect to the previous meeting where this item was addressed already, but having watched this meeting, I'm embarrassed for all of us. First, I'm embarrassed that supervisors are still asking questions about the differences between schools and daycare. Daycares have an adult-to-children ratio of six to 10 children, depending on the age group, so they're actually closely supervised by adults. I'm embarrassed that there's even a question about opening high schools when there's documented cases of universities who have theoretically adults attending because of inability to socially distance and contain, you know, further cases. If you want to quarantine only at risk groups, you should remember who the risk groups are. So that's age 65-plus or anyone with existing conditions, like one-third of Americans that are pre-diabetic or diabetic, 45% of adults that have high blood pressure, or 30% of adults that have high cholesterol. So I mean, if you want to move to quarantining all those groups, that's still going to be all of you guys. I'm really embarrassed that the budget was allocated the way that it was, by allocating funds proportionally to fund as it was before. The executive made a very clear statement that you are not prioritizing healthcare. Okay, when you prioritize something, you figure out how to fund it more from every source. The very act of waiting for requests is a failure of leadership. You should have been asking every day, "How do we fund more? Where do we get more money to address this pandemic quickly?" None of us want to be cooped up, none of us want to be wearing masks all day, but you've all failed to show leadership by not asking daily and actively, asking the health department, "What do you need? What can we do?" I understand how the CARES funds are supposed to be used. I understand how funding other stuff, other priorities with saving the general fund, but the very act again of proportionally funding is not leadership, is not prioritizing. We know that state workers are sacrificing their wages, and county workers are guaranteed jobs, guaranteed holidays, including $1 million that was allocated for administrative holiday pay for the district attorney. As you seek to fund everything proportionally, you're failing to see that the status quo is going to lead to all of the staff getting sick, and there maybe won't require any funding at all. Obviously, I'm in favor of allocating the $45 million additional dollars, but I would ask that you find, as the county executive, more money
Can you conclude your remarks, please? Can you please conclude your remarks?
That we're all, that we're all appropriately funded. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hello, good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Kim. I'm calling from the Oak Park District, and I just want to reiterate that the funds that need to go to COVID need to go to COVID. We're in a health crisis right now, and I think that even if we have to go above $45 million in chair's funding for the COVID relief, we need to do that. And if we need to fund any other emergency response right now, I think it should be fire and not law enforcement with the air quality out there right now. It's raining ash on us, and there may be another health crisis out there looming under COVID. So I think this money needs to be allocated to the public health fund as much as possible, overflow that baby because we're in a crisis right now. So please do what's right and get the funding in there that needs to go to COVID and the health, public health funding for help, public health funding for any other healthcare needs that are out there. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Keon Bliss, and I'm a constituent of District 1, and I want to name some facts that this board has looked in its blame game here. NAVGIL created a committee in process to respond to a public health crisis with no public health leadership. The process was not accountable or transparent to even those most in need of those funds, and of the $181 million dispersed from that committee, 85% went to the sheriff and probation. Everything else really doesn't matter at that point. Who gives a fuck what he said, she said on getting the public health request? The reality is, this whole system was set up to fail us, the people. So, first point, the committee, let's start with NAV's committee. You created a committee with no one from public health on it, no NAV and Bruce, neither of you had any direct experience with public health, so neither of you are sufficient representation. But let's pretend you're really collaborative and accountable to your staff. Did you sit down directly with the public health team on the ground at least once, or really any time in the past six months, to ask them what they need? This ties directly into my second point, transparency. This process was not only not transparent to your internal staff, but also to the community you are serving. Only 140 days in, was there any level of transparency around where the funds were dispersed? And that was after it came up during public comments. Which leads me into my third point, funding. So let's assume this committee was created to represent public health interests during a global pandemic. And my expectation would be that as leaders, you would be monitoring how the funds are being dispersed relative to the crisis at hand, 10 days in, 30 days in, 60 days in, 90 days in. You put yourselves on a closed-off seat of leadership with no accountability to anyone but yourselves. We are now 154 days in, 14,760 positive cases, and over 230 deaths into this, and the funding is gone, and 85% of it went to the sheriff and probation. So at the end of the day, those are the outcomes you have for this process, and those outcomes are utterly disgraceful, if not outright illegal. And people die because of it. Don't you dare lay the blame for this systemic failure on Dr. Casirier, Dr. Bealison, or anyone in the public health division. It is this board's dereliction of leadership that allowed county executives to commit fiscal malpractice and foster an environment of intimidation, bullying, and dismissiveness towards our public health officer and the public health team without any oversight or accountability. And out of the entire Board of Supervisors in this meeting, Supervisor Kennedy has been the only one willing to take responsibility for this. Supervisor Serna, you owe it to hundreds of Sacramento families grieving right now to provide full, independent accounting of how NAV's mismanaged process played out, and make damn sure that our basic human needs are your top priorities in fiscal year 2020 budget. That includes the upcoming eviction crisis, public housing for the unhoused, and those also released from jail, current food insecurity, job insecurity, distance learning, and mental health services. And the only place that money can come from is the Sheriff's Department's $554 million budget. This is your responsibility, Phil, Patrick, Don, Susan, and Sue. It's a people's house in Oregon, and don't you dare make a mistake.
Can you please conclude your remarks?
To see it done. Hit your shit together.
Thank you.
Caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes, and can you silence the meeting in the background?
Yeah, yeah, I am. Thanks. My name's Nikki, and of course, I support this $45 million, but I want to echo what others have said, that it is overdue and certainly not enough to meet the crisis at hand that our community is facing. And I want to, of course, thank the public health officer and other health officials that have been commenting on this issue, you know, for their leadership, for bravely speaking out very necessary truths in what must be unsettling settings. This debacle is not a miscommunication issue, this is a misappropriation issue. This is an issue with NAVGIL's direction, leadership, priorities, and ethics. Why do each of you continue to repeat his lie that any department could have had anything it wanted, when in fact, the county's own press release made clear that every department was asked by the county executive to look at where they could make reductions? So if you're wondering why a public health request went from 90 million to 45 million to 25 million, then blame the culture of attrition and intimidation, austerity, that your county executive has created, particularly so that he can ensure his good friend Scott Jones can continue to staff the budget uninterrupted despite the abusive, deadly, costly record of his department. This is the actual elephant in the room. And how is it that the activities of the Sheriff's Department significantly altered to mitigate the impact of COVID-19, the legal requirement to actually get this funding? The blame and abuse that has been thrown at Dr. Casirier and Dr. Bealison during this meeting has been wholly inappropriate, and more evidence of NAV's unfitness. Our commitment, even under, our community, excuse me, even under his own admittance, were not reached out to about what real struggles we are going through, or how we've been impacted by this virus, or what we need. We need housing stability now, we need food security now, we need a strong public health response that we can rely on to be free from the pressure of politics. Thank you all for taking this extra time to look more closely at this situation and your own processes. We expect you to identify the real and tragic flaws and move forward with a public health and community-driven response that is accountable and transparent, rather than a shady executive-level committee that is here sidestepping responsibility, even saying that they weren't giving yeses or no's, throwing blame to those who have been doing the serious work on the ground to keep our community safe and healthy. Once again, this is unacceptable. Y'all can do better, do better, and fire NAVGIL.
Thank you.
Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Liz Blum. First, I'd like to name that the CARES for the People Coalition was promised a presentation today that was canceled at the last minute by Supervisor Serna. This is unacceptable and shows a deep misprioritization of voices and questions. I'd also like to echo the points made by those who have commented before me, that the blaming of Dr. Casirier is unacceptable and wrong. NAVGIL continues to gaslight you all and boldly lie about his role in the decisions made up till now. I would like to thank Supervisor Kennedy for refraining from blaming Dr. Casirier and for taking responsibility for this life-threatening mismanagement. Don, I consider you a friend and would like to talk to you further about the disrespect you showed to Dr. Casirier today. I'd like to recite part of the public comment that was submitted today by a staff member of the Sacramento County Public Health Department. Quote, "Our efforts to obtain much-needed essential resources have been a painful, difficult, and a consistent struggle. We have made every effort within our power to secure the resources we needed, including when we requested two face-to-face meetings with Peter to address our concerns. The first meeting was held in March and second meeting in May. Priority topics of these discussions included, one, the continued need for essential resources; two, the constant disrespectful, condescending, belittling, and intimidating attitudes displayed to the public health response team, including the health officer, as we struggled to respond to this pandemic." Continue the quote, "Over the last week, I have listened to the conversations surrounding CARES funding for COVID-19 response that I do not actively feel reflect what occurred. So to clarify, one, we never received any clear written instruction or verbal directions regarding how much money we could request; two, how many requests we could submit; or three, whether we could have what we needed. We were notified of the availability of CARES Act funding. There was internal budget development requesting 90 million, with current estimated extended response needs identified. After learning that the CARES Act funding needed to be spent by December 31st, we had a budget team meeting to revise it for the next six months totaling 45 million. When we tried to submit it, we were told it was after the fiscal year and that the bulk of the money had already gone and there were no general funds available. How could the public health division, who is the primary lead of the local COVID-19 response, be denied the opportunity to submit a request at any point? Three, we were not told that we could submit budget requests as often as we needed, never told that we could get, quote, 'whatever we needed.' The first time I heard this proclamation was during the board meeting last week, unquote. Last thing I want to say is, please also remember that 45 million is only 24% of the total federal CARES dollars. We need you, the board, to ensure that the majority of both state and federal CARES dollars totaling 280 million to public health."
Can you please conclude your remarks? Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Chair Serna and members of the board. My name is Cassandra Jennings, and I am president and CEO of the Greater Sacramento Urban League. I am a resident of District 1. I want to, first of all, thank you for bringing this very important issue before us today, and urge each and every one of you to support with urgency the allocation of the $45 million that's being discussed today for the health department in our health crisis. Thank you for finally realizing that this is a health crisis and making it first. Sacramento County is our health provider for all of us who live in the county, and we expect you to be a leader throughout our region. The fact that we are having this conversation so late in the game is disturbing. People of color and people in under-resourced areas are disproportionately being impacted. It bothers me to know that there was a site open in Oak Park that had limited access, and then it was closed, and then it was reopened with just one day a week. How are we going to serve the people that are in most need if we don't have the access to testing, as well as contact tracing, and everything that goes with this health pandemic? I urge you to support this allocation. In addition, I'd like to thank Chair Serna and Board Member N'Toli and my member Kennedy for having the courage to really have this conversation, listening to the people and responding. I look forward to the discussion more about this CARES money, the transparency, the need to also be responsive to the housing needs, the workforce development needs, the business needs, as well as the emergency needs of the adults and the mental health of adults and children as we go through this pandemic. I urge you to support this allocation and continue to take a hands-on and leadership role in this discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Suzanne Belnap. I'm with the local chapter of the ACLU. I'd like to thank you for holding this hearing and facilitating transparency and needed action on our public health needs. And also, thank you to the good doctor for her tireless work. May the county executive officer work as tirelessly as she and her staff, and remove any unnecessary burdens and hurdles so that public health can focus on their important work. I am concerned about additional administrative burdens being put on this dedicated staff. There's been a lot of remarks about frequent reporting needs. This, again, is going to put a burden on a very small staff. Please consider facilitating staff, willing and helpful staff, to help this dedicated group. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Go ahead, please. Caller, go ahead.
Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, hello there. My name is Brittany Viallasondo. I am a student at UC Davis and as well as member of Sacramento Community. I am an administrative assistant for self-worth and recovery. And so, I must say, as a scholar, researcher, and, you know, academic individual, I truly support this reallocation of funds to the public health crisis. Now more than ever, we are seeing the domino effect that COVID-19 has had on the community. We are now seeing the horrible disparity between so many different people, you know, people that you all represent, ranging from, you know, lack of health assistance, job assistance, food insecurity, and even more so in regards to education, youth not having the proper funds and support to achieving their education. And so, I must say, from, you know, as someone who studies this and sees this from an outside lens, I encourage you all to please consider and allocate appropriate funds, not even just appropriate, but perhaps in excess, a surplus, anything to really alleviate the pain and the stress that our community has been suffering under. And so, I thank you for your time. I want to keep it quick and short, but I really hope I got my point across. So thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Go ahead, please. Caller, go ahead.
Yes, I've worked with Sacramento County Public Health for 25 plus years, and I have two asks. My first is, I encourage you to support the allocation of the CARES funding. My second ask is what a previous caller had stated, and that's to have public health presence in the decision-making process whenever, when it comes to funding or any other policies that need to be made as it affects the community's public health or the public health. Public health has always struggled for support, and now at a time when support is needed the most, it is still a struggle. Why, I don't understand. The lack of support not only stymies the work we in public health can and should do, but is a shameful disservice to Sacramento residents. It's so unfortunate that so many services have been limited to the public, especially to our communities of color. The county needs to make a commitment to employ and sustain staff that represent the community and support community programs that serve these communities. I have known and worked with Dr. Kay for as long as I've been with the county. I have the utmost respect for Dr. Kay and know she only has the public health concern at the forefront. Her integrity is being questioned. We need to look at the transparency and consistency of decisions, or lack thereof. Please don't tie her hand to do her job as the public health officer. I look forward to her continued leadership, and with the support of all the staff, that you will allow us to do our job. Once again, please right this wrong and support this allocation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm a manager within public health. I wanted to start by saying that according to the Coronavirus Relief Fund guidance to state, territorial, local, and tribal governments, funds may not be used state, territorial, local, and tribal governments, funds may not be used to fill short falls in government revenue. Since January of 2020, I have been introduced and been working directly on the COVID response. As a manager within public health, a nurse, mom, a member of this community, I felt compelled to call in today after the last meeting. I am one of the clinical leads at the COVID testing sites along with training, putting on gear, and testing COVID patients since February of this year. I'm one of the dedicated team that has been working tirelessly under the strong and consistent leadership of Dr. Ceteria. I just wanted to describe that a day in the life of public health right now in this COVID response that we are working with only two nurses out at the Cal Expo site. I am one of the trainers and we have trained tireless people, but at this time it's made up of National Guard, which is amazing. They're an amazing partner to us, but only two nurses onsite. I can tell you that during the day, it's a struggle. We have no snacks. One of the clinical leads is actually buying water, Gatorade, and things for the staff. I am working on multiple sites, including Oak Park as well as Cal Expo, as well as testing out of one of our clinics. I have nurses with band-aids on their noses due to the breakdown from the masks, their hands breaking down from being in gloves day after day, trying to figure out ways to ensure they are hydrated and safe over 103 temperatures, ensuring staff safety while providing an essential service to this community. On-site, our clinical leads are pitching in as much as possible, even putting on gear and actually going out and testing patients. It's hard not to take this very personal in the middle of all of this. The amount of time, effort, struggle with this amazing leadership team has been gone really unnoticed. We don't get paid for our time and we are essential, not dispensable. There needs to be more support for public health, for our health officer, for DHS, and that's all I have to say for today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please start with your comments and you have three minutes and please silence the meeting in the background.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Flojan Koffer. I am an epidemiologist and the senior director of policy for Public Health Advocates. I'm glad this meeting is happening, albeit a day late and $140 million short, and I encourage you all to unanimously approve this allocation today. We at Public Health Advocates offer our full and undulterated support of Dr. Ceteria and want to be clear and direct about the triangulation and scapegoating that has taken place today to blame Dr. Ceteria for not quote fighting harder against the faulty process and irresponsible leadership decisions. What I will not allow to go unchallenged is your attempt to blame the only person who was honest on the record last week. In an attempt to shirk responsibility and make themselves look better, everyone else has lied and continues in this tradition of dishonesty today. I only feel moderately better knowing that at minimum, in your attempts to distance yourself from this scandal, you recognize it as such. I also want to join the chorus of voices thanking Supervisor Kennedy for your clear leadership in taking accountability, AKA responsibility, for this malfeasance and to Supervisor Natoli for your outrage about the lies lost due to these clear missteps in management. Since some of your colleagues seem to be struggling with asking and answering key questions, allowing to do that for you now. Who is responsible? The Board of Supervisors have primary responsibility to direct public spending of the CARES Act and the county budget by setting priorities for the county executive. You are the elected official. He is there to execute your will. You should not give him a blank check and to get regular updates on the spend. This is your most important task in the pandemic. Who else is responsible? Nadine Gill and Bruce Blackshear. The county receives funds for the explicit purpose of responding to the COVID-19 pandemic. How is it that public health didn't get primacy in those decisions? More to the point, why on God's green earth was public health leadership not included as a member when this entirely optional committee was formed? Dr. Ceteria should be on the committee making decisions for where the COVID-19 dollars go and directing the other departments on how they can do their duties to be responsive to the pandemic. To be clear, they should not ever have to ask. This is their money. They should not have to fight for this money. Public health professionals are tired from working to respond to a pandemic, both in their professional and personal lives. They should not have to fight for funds of their own and in good faith, we assume that when we're told no, it's because the funds have been better spent. Public health deserves consistent funding. At your advice Supervisor Frost, we will not make your notes silently moving forward. Furthermore, I'm concerned that the spending of the CARES Act funding is illegal. I'm curious how $104 million, the sheriff's funded action, is substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to COVID-19, giving the very public litigation regarding the COVID conditions in jails, and having the dubious distinction of being one of only two counties in the entire state that won't report its COVID cases to the Board and State and Community Corrections for public health purposes. Also, this allegation was made in Nadine's own words to post free-up funding in the general fund, once the planning of previous funding is expressly not allowed in the funding guidance.
Can you please conclude your remarks?
Yes. To answer the question asked by Supervisor Frost, why are you here? You're here because we are six months into a pandemic where people have lost their lives, their housing, and their financial stability. So I hope you improve these funds today and I charge all of you to meet your immediate needs and your responsibilities to ensure covered dollars are spent equitably.
Thank you.
Caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes and please silence the meeting in the background.
Go ahead, please.
Caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Go ahead, please.
Good afternoon.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name's Daniel Silva. I'm the founder of Self-Awareness and Recovery. SAR has been offering multitude of community services, community services that empower and uplift every individual in need of assistance. We emphasize on providing emergency rental assistance, job assistance, reentry, navigation, and more. As servants to the community, we rely on our mission to reduce positivism rate of incarceration in adult and youth offenders, in addition to preventing others from being system impacted. In order to accomplish our mission, it is imperative that we continue to provide these services as part of our ongoing community support in healing our communities from the brokenness of drugs, crime, and criminality. SAR will continue to provide services to those in need the most, and it is our duty to serve the most vulnerable, especially during these times of COVID-19, and provide emotionally literacy workshops to heal from the emotional trauma as we believe in second chances, hope, and redemption, and restored justice approaches. At a time when California and the nation are experiencing the COVID-19 pandemic, it is especially critical that all community-based organizations receive the necessary funding to be able to support those communities impacted the most. Now is the time to embrace an inclusive view of shared safety. Our top priority is to stabilize community-driven safety solutions that center around prevention and healing, and at SAR, we offer trauma-based healing workshops that are being shared with local youth and adults through lived experiences from formerly incarcerated men who have personally lived and been in their shoes. As an organization that provides healing to the most vulnerable in our communities, we must be equipped to deliver critical services during this time, but needed funding and resources to continue our work and make a difference in our communities. Thank you.
Caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Jamie White and I serve as the incident commander for the county's Public Health COVID-19 Department Operations Center. I'm also a proud constituent of Supervisor Natoli. The Sacramento County Public Health COVID-19 Response Team reports to duty generally seven days per week because it is comprised of individuals who are passionate about serving our community. Regardless of the cost to their personal lives and well-being, our staff have consistently gone above and beyond the call of duty despite not being appropriately compensated for their time or receiving any recognition for their efforts from the county's executive leadership. The division acted early, activating the Public Health Coordination Center and standing up an incident command system, which includes county EMS, on January 15, 2020. I outlined some of our team's many accomplishments in my full statement, which was emailed to the board. It is a privilege and an honor to work alongside such talented individuals. That honor extends to working under the direction of an exceedingly competent and beloved health officer, Dr. Olivia Ceteria. There is simply no one more qualified to lead our county during these unprecedented times than Dr. Ceteria, and yet she has been persistently undermined by those who should be supporting her within county leadership. An example is the CEO's office directing Dr. Ceteria to dismiss the services of former health officer Dr. Glenn Troche. The loss of Dr. Troche severely crippled our response at the time. The CEO's office sent a clear message to our now demoralized team that they would rather settle old political scores than support us or support the community. These issues are not new. County executive and department leadership have silenced and pushed Dr. Ceteria into the background since we transitioned to mitigation in early March. Dr. Ceteria is the only person with the legal authority to issue a local health officer order. Her bosses plagiarized and preemptively issued a draft of her initial stay-at-home order as a meaningless watered-down directive before she released her actual orders. These foolish power plays caused much of the preventable chaos and confusion experienced by our community during the early stages of the pandemic. To add insult to injury, in the very chambers where you sit, you did not allow her to announce her own orders, beaming the grocery industry as more relevant. It is unfortunate that it has taken a public scandal to hold the county executive office accountable to what is most important during this time, our residents and especially the most vulnerable among us to our suffering. I would like to commend the board on its commitment to do better moving forward. I respectfully ask that you set Dr. Ceteria and the public health team up for success in regards to being able to use the funds discussed today in a timely and effective manner. I expand on this request in my full statement. Finally, I beg of you to protect Dr. Ceteria from further retaliation and disrespect for the failings of others. She has persisted through impossible circumstances with strength, professionalism, and grace. So please know this, as long as we are here, the public health team will be here to hold her up. Thank you.
Caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, yeah, my, good afternoon. My name is Hyman and I'm a reentry navigator for Self-Awareness and Recovery. My duties and responsibilities here as a navigator are to ensure the best possible transition for those previously incarcerated so that they may establish a solid footing in society and refrain from resorting back to their old behaviors of alcohol, drugs, or criminality. As the reentry navigator for SAR, it is my responsibility to do an assessment of the client to determine the best course of action and determine his or her needs. People come to SAR looking for guidance to navigate the way to their resources and we provide those services here. Individuals need assistance for housing, we find them in emergency housing and put them in a motel for a few days. SAR also will provide transportation services to where they need to go and we also offer bus passes. Others need food services and we provide food for them here at our office and also provide a warm handout. Some need emotional or mental support and we provide workshops that help address their needs. It is imperative that you continue to provide SAR and other community-based organizations the funding to continue to reach out to those that have been systematically impacted and formerly incarcerated, both youth and adults that are struggling to get their needs met at this critical time with the COVID-19 pandemic. Now is the time for this Board of Supervisors to act. You also must consider the release of thousands of inmates into our communities grows soon and where are they going to go and what are they going to do if they don't have any resources available to them? Thank you.
Thank you.
I conclude your comments.
Okay. I want to thank all the speakers who waited patiently to address the board on this matter. Appreciate your patience. Before we go to supervisors for deliberation, just a matter of process here for that, I'm going to go ahead and make an early motion to approve the $45 million request with the express part of the 15.3 million that the public health officer has identified that would in part address food security to go to the Sacramento Food Bank and Family Services Organization per their request that they've put in writing and to which the president and CEO was, I believe, the first speaker this afternoon. And what I would ask anyone willing to make a second to the motion is that I'm certainly open to any amendments as we deliberate so that we might want to add to that or subtract from it. It is also, I think, part of the motion that I should reference that I feel strongly that going forward, we should have a regular, very transparent, public check-in with this board at every, at least on my watch as chair, every subsequent board meeting. I'm not sure if we do that as kind of an informational item or a timed matter, but there's been a clear interest by the public. There's a clear interest by me as chair that there hasn't been enough supervision, quite frankly, by the board, at least to the extent that we can hear in real time or as close to real time, how our response to the pandemic is progressing or what the resource needs are. So that is going to be folded into my motion. So.
If I could, what we can do on that is we do have contracts to implement and that update, if we need an action on a contract, we can add that in, otherwise give you the information you have. So we'll do a two-prong on that.
Yeah, I'm just saying that I think we have our meetings every two weeks. We have, if the board affirms the request this afternoon, we are setting in motion a clear deployment of resources on the public health front and again, just in terms of the expression of interest to keep our thumb on the pulse of this. In addition to contracts, I guess is what I'm saying is that each one of those meetings we get a.
An update.
An update.
Yep.
That's what I'm looking for. And so with that, I guess I would first look for a second and then I have some initial questions, comments, and then we'll go to supervisors.
A second, but if you can indulge the second or I'd like to ask either or doctor to come up to answer a quick question. It's about that issue, the 15.3.
Well, actually, could I, could I ask the question? I was going to bring them up after I heard a second to ask my questions and then go to board members. Is that, is that okay?
Sure.
So why don't, why don't both of you come up? So just a couple of quick questions and they're questions that really stem from some of the public comment. First, Dr. Billenson, I believe it was Ms. Jennings, the executive director with Urban League, who mentioned that there was a cessation in testing activity at the Oak Park site at one point. And I'm assuming by her reference to Oak Park, she meant the St. Paul site, unless it's another site, but about. meant the St. Paul site, unless it's another site. But if I'm mistaken, please, please clarify what you think that site is. But it was my understanding, I thought that the cessation of testing didn't have anything to do necessarily with the CARES Act funding. I thought it had more to do with the unavailable of complete testing kits. Can you please speak up?
We had five sites, as you may remember, plus the Oak Park site at St. Paul's originally. We're now up to 10 sites, plus the Oak Park site, and we had an issue with swabs at UC Davis that they ran out of them, and they ran, sorry, they ran out of reagent. So we were down for a day, and we had the National Guard come for a pop-up for one of the days, and then we started up a STEM Express, which we've been using ever since.
So that really had nothing to do with CARES Act?
No, it had nothing to do with CARES Act.
Did it have anything to do with any funding source, really, from?
No, it had to do, it had to do with reagent.
Right.
With material.
That's why I'm asking the question, because I presume that was probably the answer. I just wanted, for the record, and hopefully Ms. Jennings is listening, so she can understand that. And then, Dr. Caserier, a number of callers made reference to members of the board either today or leading up to the meeting, being very critical of you. And I think some of us had puzzled looks for each other when we heard those words. So I'd like to understand if you, if you think that either I or other members of this board have criticized you here today. I think what, at least I'm trying to communicate and have been over several days, is a grand welcome to please collaborate with me as chair and certainly with the entire board to just, moving forward, help us understand what your needs are, making sure that public health has what they need to respond to the pandemic. So I don't know if you'd like to elaborate on how you would like to characterize that.
Not from the board. And I think probably the speaker, what they were referring to is when Supervisor Natoli was asking questions about the mobile integrated health units and kind of saying, you know, what happened, and maybe that was the interpretation. But I did not feel that from the board.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure that people were clear that I didn't, at least I didn't feel that anyone from the board was being accusatory towards you necessarily, and I just wanted to ask the question.
If I could, Mr. Chair, because I meant no disrespect to anyone, and I certainly stressed what I felt was a, you know, a breakdown in wherever it occurred, but I certainly wasn't attributing that to you, Dr. K, and I wasn't attributing to anybody. I just, that was my point. And so, again, if it was taken disrespectfully by anybody in the room, I apologize for that. Again, I think it was meant to focus on the concern about the fact that we had something good going, and it had elapsed, and we're going to be back at it again. So hopefully you understood that, and I would just say that for the broader audiences watching this, it was not disrespectful to you or to anyone else in this room. It was...
That's the way that I took it. And maybe just for the record also, our staff have been very resourceful. So when the mobile integrated health units were not available anymore, we got additional nurses to be able to help with the testing. Of course, it was not the ideal, and I think it will be very welcome to have those units back again because it was definitely a lot easier for us to be able to make sure that all of the facilities had the testing that they needed.
Thanks.
Okay. Supervisor Kenny?
Thank you, Chair, and I apologize to those that have punched in, but this is directly related to the motion, so I wanted to, before it gets too stale, just ask one question. And that's, the chair has, and I agree, it's important, included the amendment to it of the $1.5 million for the food bank. Out of that $15.3 million, I, again, I have to stay consistent and say that, ask you, does that interfere, taking, carving out that $1.5 million, will that interfere with what you're trying to accomplish with that $15.3 million?
It was included, so this is right in line with the plan that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My second stand.
Thank you. Supervisor Pross.
Yes, I just wanted to thank Dr. Billenson and Dr. Caserier and all of our executives for all the hard work during COVID. And I know, I know you've done a lot in the last three months. I believe it's imperative that you have the resources that you need to carry out your vital mission. And I want you to know that leaders and business owners and residents in our communities are counting on you to help them, help them open as quickly and safely as possible. And we're counting on you, too, because we're getting those phone calls. And I know you know how much pressure that puts on all of us, because we're, we want to, we want to help solve those problems. I absolutely support the allocation of the funds today, and I support the amendment for the food banks. The food banks have just had tremendous, been overloaded during this time. And so I support and thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I plan to support the motion today also, but I had a question about the allocation for the food banks. There's, there are more food banks in Sacramento Food Bank. Do you know names of others that are in your plan?
I can't name any right now because we are working with 15-plus agencies that are going to come together to be able to execute this. But I can definitely send you the names once we finalize it.
I would like to know, there's a food bank in Arden Arcade that's newer than Sacramento Food Bank. It's about four, five years old now. And they're, they're mentioned on the website of Sacramento Food Bank. This is called River City Food Bank. And I didn't know whether allocations would, not knowing the Sacramento Food Bank organizations, whether they give resources to other food banks. Do you know?
Yeah, I could answer that. I'm very familiar with the food bank. And the food, Sacramento Food Bank acts as kind of the clearinghouse and the umbrella.
That's, that's what I was hoping.
Yeah.
If I can add, if you look at the third page of the letter, it has them all listed. River City Food Bank is listed in there.
Yeah, they, they all use the food bank as the umbrella.
Question answered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah. First, I want to just say thanks once again. I think I started my comments out earlier this afternoon, certainly for all the work that our essential workers who, you know, up and down the line that, you know, are out in the community in various aspects. And certainly, we heard from a number of those folks, certainly in the public health department, today. But there's a lot of folks, again, who have made tremendous sacrifice, personal sacrifice, professional sacrifice, to, you know, meet the needs and the ongoing demand for services. And again, I've heard from folks who've been very appreciative of, I think, the emphasis put on getting testing sites located accessibly in the community to getting a quicker turnaround, to working cooperatively to make sure that some of the most vulnerable populations continue to have focus on needs for testing and certainly for putting that kind of frontline, public safety, public health, right out front for all to see. I think oftentimes, the work isn't really recognized in a way that people can't, I don't think, be said, "Thank you," enough, since releasing that. And so I wanted to be sure that was conveyed, certainly to Dr. B., Dr. K., and to all the folks in line workers and our partners. And again, I'm hopeful, very hopeful, that with the action that we, you know, propose to take here in a moment, that this, you know, begins to really, I think, set in motion. And I think it's going to require more than just the dollars. And I trust that, you know, the pledge of help at all different levels, again, and I said this earlier, and I know I talked with Mr. Gill earlier about this, again, I make the assumption that, and I think correctly so, that whether it's with contracting, with in procurement, and getting, hiring, all those things that take some time, but that the urgency is understood by all involved, and that we're going to work together as a team on behalf of this community that we all serve to see to it, that we deliver the services and programs in a way that, you know, will make us all not only proud of the effort, but certainly recognize, you know, what it does from a standpoint of public health and safety. I wanted to ask about the motion, because embedded in the $15 million is for the Sacramento Food Bank and Family Services. But, you know, one of the things that has certainly been a consistent theme, besides giving our frontline personnel the tools and the support and the personnel to work in concert with those that have already been there, doing this for six months now, is food insecurity. And I think a million and a half would go a long way. But if we have the ability, because when I read the staff report, it talks about allocation of CARES money, both currently and what's anticipated that we will receive. And again, it would seem to me, if we have to obligate the money, that one thing is, a lot of foodstuffs have a shelf life, and so we ought to, you know, in my view, we could allocate $5 million. And I don't think it would go to waste if, in fact, it carried through the pandemic. Because what I heard Dr. B. say, and certainly I've heard Dr. K. in other forums say, that, you know, we're not going to be out of this situation this winter. We hope for a vaccine. We hope to be able to administer that in the spring. But if we obligate the money and purchase food, and maybe use FEMA dollars and state OES, and I appreciate what Nav and Mr. Cattelme have been working on, make sure those food banks have whatever they need, have overstock shelves. I'd much rather have that than have a situation where we continue to have this demand, and certainly the fundraising on their end of it has diminished. And so I would be, again, if we can't take it with today's action, be supportive of, you know, if, not to come out of the $15 million, but to supplement that by an additional sum of dollars to make sure that our community partners have what they need going up to December 30th, but also carry on through the spring. And I would think that's legitimate, because we're going to be in this pandemic for months to come, unfortunately. And so I guess I offer that as, just as a comment to the motion. And then lastly, I would just say that, I think it was answered, but I know that some of the food banks are located in various communities. They work under the umbrella, but they also respond to, and whether they're in Arden Arcade, or in Folsom, or Magic Nova, or Elk Grove, or Galt, or North Highlands, wherever they're at. And they certainly rely on Sacramento Food Bank services. But they also do fundraising. I think their challenge to raise additional dollars for the foodstuffs that they provide in those distinct communities, in addition to what they may receive. Not all of their foodstuffs or donations come via the Sacramento Food Bank. And again, I, that's why I would encourage us to think about maybe appropriating more money in that regard. The other thing I want to say, Mr. Chair, is that this idea of housing insecurity, and again, this is very specific to those who would be quarantined or in some isolation, but there's a vulnerable population out there that's at risk, and certainly by age, by their other situations, your health situations, as Dr. Caserier described earlier this afternoon. And so maybe we assign a pot of money as a part of the food insecurity, the housing insecurity, to allow us, again, maybe we have a report back, and this is as soon as two weeks with SHRA, how we can make some of that money available for real need for folks that we serve, again, largely in the unincorporated area we're talking about here, but they're, you know, in this community. And I'd like to see us do that, not just people who are homeless, folks who are on the verge of being homeless, who are at great risk as families and individuals. And I think it's an appropriate use of the money. And if it's going to come down from those sources, and we anticipate more money coming down, I don't know what that number is, I'd like to see us move in that direction. So I don't know how you might incorporate that into a motion, but...
Well, if I could respond, I appreciate the comments. I share the concern. But that's kind of precisely why, you recall, part of the motion also is procedurally to have at every subsequent board meeting, at least as long as I'm serving as chair, to get a report back on kind of the totality of where we are in response, including the burn rate, if you will, of what we're about to affirm. So, for instance, if, given your interest in, I think, all of our interest in those two general issues, food security and housing security, I think the CEO and the county exec in charge of countywide services can understand that that's going to be of interest, and that's kind of going to be first on the docket for us to want to understand in two weeks. It gives us some flexibility to not only hear back from our staff, but between now and then, like the Sacramento Food Bank Family Services has done, they've given us a very specific monetary request. Today, I don't know what, I don't know what the request would be for, you know, for the smaller food banks or for housing security. So that's procedurally kind of the way I'd like to handle it, if there's, you know, if it's the will of the board to support that. But that was the idea behind the report backs at every single subsequent meeting for the balance of this calendar year. Okay, Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. Nav, I think it might be, it would be good to hear back, since it appears there were some surprises here as we went through this, and you've got a good team of executives to kind of look through your procedures and organizational charts and those sorts of things, and see how we can avoid future, that probably goes to you, Bruce, that we can avoid these kinds of situations going forward.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, before we vote, one last thing I'll make mention of, and that is, a number of callers today, and certainly through emails, text messages, since last Tuesday, I know I've received a number of communiques from my constituents and organizations concerned about, I'll just be very frank, the job security of our public health officer. I just want to make clear for those that are continuing to watch the proceedings, that I have asked our county council to distribute a clear memorandum to all the board members that, again, reiterates, I know it's been done for the current public health officer's predecessor, but outlines, again, the relationship, working relationship between the Board of Supervisors and the public health officer, including who's in charge of hiring and firing that position. So that is something that is going to be landing in inboxes here shortly for all board members, members of the public that have expressed concern about that, which I, which I understand. I just want them to understand that I've taken that into account, and we're going to have a very clear understanding of who is in charge of what. So with that, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Any CEO comments? Any board comments? I do have one adjournment. And this one's kind of a tough one.
Thank you, doctors. You can, you can sit.
You can guys, you guys can sit.
You're good. Thanks.
But I wouldn't mind if you stayed for the adjournment. So this is a tough adjournment for me. It's a personal one. I know we don't do it that often as members of the board, but this is someone in my family. And this is my Tio Ruben. And for those that don't know the expression "Tio," that means uncle in Spanish. He's a younger brother of my father. And my Tio Ruben passed earlier this week from complications from COVID. He had been in a skilled nursing facility for, for a number of years. One of the strongest people I've ever met. He was, he was an amputee. He was blind. He suffered from diabetes. Yet he still maintained a sense of humor throughout his illness. That's what he's really known for in our family. He's, he's the uncle that cracks all the jokes and keeps us smiling and laughing. But like so many, he succumbed to the complications of this pandemic. I have reached out to my family to try and acquire their best memories, things that they really remember and appreciate about my Tio Ruben. And this, by the way, is my father's younger brother. And he used to have a saying, it was a toast, really, but it would be a toast for anything, not just, not just alcoholic beverages. But I'm told by my cousins, Shoshana, Maya, who said, who let me know that almost at any opportunity, he would, he would toast "En la frontera no paran." And that means, "On the front, they shall not pass." And that was his way of, I think, reminding certainly his, his children, but the rest of us, that solid... of us, that solidarity in the face of adversity is something that we are not to take for granted, it should be celebrated. My uncle was a very skilled union organizer for the United Farm Workers for a number of years. He spent a couple of years in Cameroon, Africa, as a Peace Corps volunteer in the '70s. He's going to be someone I really dearly miss. We will adjourn in memory of Ruben Serna.